We'll call the meeting to order. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening. There we go. Do we have any closed session reports?
Nothing to report, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Chief Livingston, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chief. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Litzter?
Here.
Councilmember Loevanos?
Here.
Councilmember Kavanaugh?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Judge?
Here.
And Mayor Mashburn?
Here.
tier in the state's county risk level. However, because COVID is still with us, Simi Valley and the other nine cities in the county continue to hold their council meetings without the public in attendance. Although the public is not here, there are still opportunities for the listening public to participate in this council meeting. The public statements procedure continues as it has for prior meetings. As noted on the agenda, the public was encouraged to submit emails concerning tonight's agenda. For emails submitted prior to 12 noon today, those emails have already been provided to the city council. They will be made part of the record but will not be read by the city clerk tonight. We have three opportunities for public statements this evening. The first opportunity is to comment on Agenda Item 2, Appointments, Special Presentations, and Informational Reports. If you wish to make a comment on Appointments, Special Presentations, and Informational Reports portion of Agenda, emails received after 12 noon today up to the beginning of this Agenda item will be read by the city clerk this evening. Emails should be sent to the city clerk's office at publicstatements@simivalley.org. Include in the subject line Agenda Item Number 2 and should be limited to 250 words or less. At the beginning of this Agenda item, email receipt will be closed. Subsequently, the city will read the emails received for a period of 30 minutes. Every effort will be made to read all emails into the record, but some emails may not be read due to time limitations. Emails received after the beginning of this Agenda item or unread emails will be made part of the record if received prior to the end of the meeting. The second opportunity is to provide testimony on Agenda Item 4, Public Hearings. If you wish to provide testimony on Item 4, the public hearings portion of the agenda, emails received after 12 noon today and during the meeting may be read at this council meeting. Emails should be sent to the city clerk's office at publicstatements@simivalley.org. Include in the subject line Agenda Item Number 2 and should be limited to 250 words or less. At the beginning of this Agenda item, email receipt will be closed. Subsequently, the city will read the emails received for a period of 30 minutes. Every effort will be made to read all emails into the record, but some emails may not be read due to time limitations. Emails received after the beginning of this Agenda item or unread emails will be made part of the record if received prior to the end of the meeting. The second opportunity is to provide testimony on Agenda Item 4, Public Hearings. If you wish to provide testimony on Item 4, the public hearings portion of the agenda, emails received after 12 noon today and during the meeting may be read at this council meeting. Emails should be sent to the city clerk's office at publicstatements@simivalley.org. Include in the subject line the Agenda Item Number, example Agenda Item Number 4A, and should be limited to 250 words or less. At the conclusion of the staff presentation for each hearing under Item 4, email receipt will be closed. Subsequently, the city will read the emails received. Every effort will be made to read all emails into the record, but some emails may not be read due to time limitations. Emails received after the conclusion of the staff presentation of Item 4 or unread emails will be made part of the record if received prior to the end of the meeting. Public testimony will also be permitted at the conclusion of the staff presentation through Zoom for members of the public who pre-registered with the city's planner by 9:00 a.m. this morning. The third opportunity is Agenda Item 5, Public Statements. The same procedure will be used for public statements. Emails received after 12 noon today up to the beginning of this Agenda item will be read by the city clerk this evening. Emails should be sent to the city clerk's office at publicstatements@simivalley.org. Include in the subject line Agenda Item Number 5, limited to 250 words. At the beginning of this Agenda item, email receipt will be closed. No new emails will be received and read. The city clerk will begin to read the emails received since noon today, spending three minutes on each email. The city clerk will spend 30 minutes total reading emails. For those emails that are not read, they will be entered into the record. So right now, you can still send emails that may be read during the meeting for Agenda Items 2, 4, and 5.
The city thanks you for your patience, and the entire city council also thanks you for your patience. During this local emergency, the city continues to provide opportunities for the public to participate in the business of the city and for their voices to be heard. With that said, we can move on with the meeting, and we'll start with the Agenda Review. Are there any items for review?
Yes. It was brought to my attention through correspondence through constituent that it appears that for Item 4A, it was noticed incorrectly. And I went, I actually went to confirm that myself and have a photograph. The noticing says that it was moderate, to be changed to moderate density, whereas what we've received in the agenda says for high density. So I'm wondering, does that incorrect noticing, is it appropriate to go forward with the hearing, a public hearing at this time, or should it be pushed to the next city council meeting so it could be noticed correctly?
We'll hear from the planning director.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I wouldn't say that either one's noticing correctly. It has the date, same correct date, time, place. The issue here is that the public have a reasonable expectation, understanding what is being discussed. And what the language is on the sign is that this is for a general plan, a recent Supreme Amendment. And so this is not a final decision tonight. The other city council is not approving the project. If the city council will support the request, they have to be part of a formal application. So that being said, we feel that there is fact of fact information on the sign.
Okay, question, I think, for the city attorney. Number one, the difference in moderate and high density. And then I'll second that, go on with that question. And I would like to hear if it's legal, the comments from the public and letters they have written. And maybe from those letters, we can determine if there was an understanding or misunderstanding.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
I'm sorry, Mayor. If I may ask a question to go along with that. Does the report that's attached, did that include the high density?
Correct, it does.
Okay, because I get both. So I get the one that I get a city council member plus as a resident. So that if you read the report, it would have been in there, that would have been notice as well.
So, but just to clarify, so if the sign said moderate, but the agenda says high density?
Well, the agenda actually says very high.
But there's a difference between the agenda and the sign, is what you mean?
Correct. The sign says moderate.
So because it's a prescreen, it's within the council's discretion whether you, as a body, want to be convinced that the public has enough notice. It's not going to be fatal legally because of the internal procedure nature of a prescreen? In other words, you're prescreening, it's our own code procedure to do this. So it's not like an outside party can say, okay, you definitely can't go forward. You could go forward, but I think it's up to the council to determine on the facts whether you believe the public had enough notice, you know, of the project. So.
Are you able to answer my question if we could, down the road, listen to the emails from the public and see if there's an indication from those of what their understanding was?
You certainly could use that to help make your decision, yes.
So I would ask that we bring this up on the Agenda item.
That's fine, as long as.
As long as we could hear their comments, and then we'll readdress whether we should table it or not.
Okay.
Is that okay?
Fair enough, fair enough.
Fair enough, fair enough? Okay, let's do that.
And Mr. Mayor, I'll note one other item for Agenda Review. On the second reading of 7B, the ordinance, we inadvertently did not include the exhibit of Exhibit C. We have the cover page, but in the distribution of the report, it didn't have the exhibit itself. So we just want to, we've provided now that exhibit. It was in the original adoption of the work by the council at the last meeting. So I just want to make sure you understand that the exhibit now is part of the record.
Okay. Everybody got that? And I think we have copy here, so.
Then I'll go forward and move that all resolutions and ordinances presented tonight be read in title only, and all further reading be waived.
Second?
Second.
Call for the vote.
Judge votes, yes.
Come on, Ray. This is how he gets his extra thing.
You okay? Whoops.
The motion passes unanimously.
Okay, declaration of conflict. Any member of the city council may have a conflict of interest or any reason why that member must abstain from consideration of any matter on this agenda, he or she should so declare at this time. Hold on. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, the first item on the agenda is Item 1D1, a proclamation declaring the week of October 4 through the 10th, 2020, as Code Enforcement Officer Appreciation Week. And Linda Swan is here to read the proclamation.
Good evening, Mayor Mashburn and City Council. Whereas the state of California has designated the second week of October as Code Enforcement Officer Appreciation Week, and whereas code enforcement officers recognized as code compliance officers in the city of Simi Valley provide for the safety, health, and welfare of citizens through enforcement and education of local, state, and federal laws, and ordinance ranging from zoning to life safety, and whereas code compliance officers have challenging and demanding roles and often do not receive recognition for the job they do in improving the quality of life for residents and businesses, and whereas code compliance officers are dedicated, highly qualified, and highly trained professionals who share the goals of preventing neighborhood deterioration, enhancing communities, ensuring safety, and preserving property values through knowledge, training, and application of housing, zoning, and nuisance laws. And whereas code compliance officers often have a highly visible role in the city of Simi Valley and regularly interact with the public and a variety of federal, state, county, and local officials, and whereas throughout Ventura County and specifically in the city of Simi Valley, code compliance officers have provided the primary community response to the COVID-19 public health emergency through community education, business support, and dispute resolution activities. And whereas the city of Simi Valley wants to recognize and honor the code compliance officers that serve our community and acknowledge their role in leading the way to improve its quality of life. Now therefore, the week of October 4 through October 10, 2020, is hereby proclaimed Code Compliance Officer Appreciation Week in the city of Simi Valley to encourage all citizens to join in recognizing and expressing their appreciation for the dedication and service by the individuals who serve as our code compliance officers, presented this fifth day of October.
Thank you. Comments from the council?
If I may, Mayor. I just want to thank our code compliance officers. I know that it is a difficult job, especially right now, given the tension between the regulations that are being placed, that are handed down to us from the state and the county, and the conflict between, you know, people's personal opinions as to what needs to happen and what they feel they should and shouldn't have to do for the public good. And I know that you're often placed in positions that are difficult. But know that we appreciate what you do. That's why we have this resolution, to let you know that we're grateful for what you do, and that you are doing the work that needs to be done for the greater public good, which is to, you know, reinforce our mission statement, which is to provide excellent customer service for the health and safety of all of our residents here in Simi Valley. And I just want to say how grateful I am to you. So thank you for the work that you do.
Thank you.
And Mayor, if I could just add one thing as well. I wanted to acknowledge that they have, that our code enforcement has had an even larger responsibility because the county has asked for all businesses to be registered with this COVID compliance. And it's my understanding that it is our code enforcement officers that were then required to make sure all of our businesses were code compliant. And I know that our code officers, enforcement officers, often it wasn't just one-time visit, it would be repeated visit to be sure that everything was in order and so that, because our desire, of course, was that businesses could operate. But I'm appreciative of that extra mile. So thank you.
Thank you. I'd just like to say, I too appreciate what's going on with the code enforcement folks. And it's no longer really code enforcement as much as it is code education. And I'm hearing that more and more from the restaurants and facilities that have been contacted by those officers, that they go in and it's, how can I help you? Let me show you how to do this. Let me show you how to become compliant. And that's great to hear. And it's being received extremely well from our community. Because when they see that code officer walking in, it's no longer like, oh, what did I do wrong this time? It's more like, what am I going to learn this time? And they're going to help me get through this, and they're going to help me be compliant. So with that, I appreciate that work, and I think that's a great direction that we're going.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, next item on the agenda is Item 2, Public Statements on Appointments, Special Presentations, and Informational Reports. And, Mr. Mayor, we receive no public statements for this item. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, the next item on the agenda is Item 3A1, Appointment of Two Youth Council Members. And Kristin Tigneck is here for this presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Mashburn and members of the city council. The Apollo High School and Sinaloa Middle School representative positions on the youth council have been vacant since July 1st. To achieve full membership on the youth council, a special recruitment was initiated on September 4th and concluded on September 22nd. A total of three applications were received. On September 29th, an interview committee comprised of four current youth council members conducted interviews and nominated Monish Maney and Madeline Herser for the vacant Apollo High School and Sinaloa Middle School representative positions. The youth council selection committee recommends that the city council approve and the mayor appoint Monish Maney and Madeline Herser for the Apollo High School and Sinaloa Middle School representatives to serve the remainder of the unexpired one-year terms on the Simi Valley Youth Council commencing on October 6, 2020, and concluding on June 30, 2021. This concludes staff's report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
I was just going to ask if I can make the motion, if there's no question?
Yes.
Okay. I move to approve and the mayor appoint Monish Maney and Madeline Herser to the Simi Valley Youth Council as the Apollo High School and Sinaloa Middle School representatives to serve the remainder of the unexpired one-year term on the Simi Valley Youth Council commencing October 6, 2020, and concluding on June 30, 2021. Second?
Second.
Motion at second. We'll call for the vote.
He's trying to second, I don't see why he said yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
And I'll follow the direction of the council and appoint the two individuals. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, we have no special presentations or informational reports on the agenda tonight. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, next item on the agenda is public hearings. This is a time for testimony on public hearings on consideration of matters as presented on this agenda. Let the record show that due notice was given as required by law, and an affidavit to this effect is on file in the city clerk's office. All comments submitted by email prior to 12:00 p.m. today have already been provided to the city council and will be made part of the record. However, they will not be read by the city clerk at the meeting. Comments received after 12:00 p.m. noon today up until the conclusion of the staff presentation for the hearing under Item 4 will be read. Every effort will be made to read emails into the record, but some emails may not be read due to time limitations. Emails received after the conclusion of the staff presentation for Item 4 or unread emails will be made part of the record if received prior to the end of the meeting. At the conclusion of the staff presentation, public testimony through Zoom for members of the public who registered with the city planner will be heard prior to the reading of the emails. Comments should be limited to matters relevant to the item on the agenda and may be ruled out of order if comments are unrelated to the item. The reports of the city staff relating to these matters shall be made part of the record of this meeting. If you challenge in court any of the city council decisions made here tonight, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing. The time within the judicial review must be sought is governed by California Code of Civil Procedure Section 1094.6. Agenda Item 4A, A Public Hearing to Consider General Plan Amendment Prescreening Review GPPS-2020-01, Cabrillo Economic Development Corporation, A Request to Change the General Plan Use Designation. And Sean Gibson and Jennifer Santos are here for this presentation.
Stand by one moment. Isn't this where we want to hear the public comments?
That will be coming, yes.
It will come, but do we want to hear that to see if we want to continue? Because this is where we had the question in the beginning.
Mayor, I just checked my email, like, my email, just to make sure. And on the email that I get from the city, not my city council email, my personal email, it does say high density.
Yeah, it's only the sign that was correct, that was incorrect on the property.
Yeah, but in the agenda that was sent out via email to the public, it does say high density.
Okay.
So there was notification.
I would recommend, you can continue the hearing at any time. So I would recommend moving through until you hear the comments from the audience, public statements, as well as Zoom comments, which would be a little bit later on the agenda. And then at that point in time, if it appears as though there's confusion or anything else, then the council can always continue it at that time.
Okay.
So I would, yeah, so I would recommend starting the hearing, and you can start with that.
Okay. This is time and place set for a public hearing to consider General Plan Amendment Prescreening GPPS-2020-01, A Request to Change the General Plan Land Use Designation from Civic Center to Residential Very High Density for a .885 acre site located at 3802 Avenue de Simi. Are there any expertise communications to report?
Oh, my goodness. Mayor, I went to, I'm sorry, I'm not going to remember the exact month because it was so long ago, it was about a year ago. Cabrillo did a public hearing at the library, and I attended that public hearing, just as a member of the public.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? I believe that I, it was quite some time ago, there was a presentation very, very general in nature, and I saw that presentation by Cabrillo.
I saw the same presentation, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Okay, oral report, Sean. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Mashburn and members of the city council. The applicant, Cabrillo Economic Development Corporation, submitted a general plan prescreening request back on February 6, 2020, for city council's authorization to proceed with a formal general plan amendment application to change the site's current general plan designation from civic center to residential very high density. The property is owned by the city. Back in 2016, a different applicant, which was Mini Mansions, submitted a similar prescreening request to change the designation to residential very high. At that time, the applicant did receive authorization to move forward, however, that applicant chose not to proceed with that project. Again, it's important to note that the city council is not approving any development project tonight, but this hearing will allow for the city council to provide feedback and direction to the applicant on a potential general plan amendment at this site. Senior Planner Jennifer Santos will now present the report. Jennifer?
Good evening. The applicant is requesting to change the general plan designation from civic center to residential very high in order to develop the site with an affordable 35-unit senior affordable apartment complex on a vacant .885 acre parcel located at 3802 Avenue de Simi. As mentioned, the Simi Valley, the city council is a decision-maker to authorize initiation of a general plan amendment request. Authorizing the initiation does not guarantee approval for a project. The subject site is surrounded by single-family residents to the north and to the west, and to the east is a shared driveway for the senior center and an access to the county courthouse is right over here. The site previously contained a single-family residence that was demolished a number of years ago and is flat with three large trees that are located on the east side of the property. There is a perimeter wall that is built, that is a masonry block wall that is located along the side and rear property lines. Currently, as mentioned, it is owned by the city and was originally acquired through the Simi Valley Community Development Agency. The current general plan designation for the site is civic center. Under the present designation, housing cannot be developed. The applicant is requesting to change the designation to residential very high to allow him to submit an application request to allow up to 30, allow a 35-unit senior affordable apartment complex. Multifamily developments are intended to be limited to the central portion of the valley floor, on arterial streets, near shopping and transit, and other public facilities. This site provides opportunity for this type of land use designation. Since it is centrally located on the valley floor and is within walking distance to, from a transit stop, commercial shopping centers, and the civic center campus that consists of the senior center, city hall, Rancho Tapa Community Park, the library, and other government offices. The purpose of the residential very high land use designation is to encourage higher-density residential developments that include garden-style apartments and similar structures. residential developments that include garden-style apartments and similar structures with a density that ranges between 20 to 35 units per acre. The proposed site could allow up to 31 multifamily units, and the applicant is proposing 35 multifamily units that can be allowed with a density bonus. The applicant would propose a 35-unit affordable apartment complex for seniors. This site plan shows a conceptual layout of the site. Conceptually, they would propose 34 one-bedroom units and one-studio, studio unit. The applicant will provide more of a diagram of the site. This slide shows the four required fundings to support a general plan pre-screening request. The first two items determine whether the proposed general plan change has the potential to be compatible with existing land uses and with the goals and policies of the general plan. These are the highest consideration in the process. The intent of the proposed residential very high density is to provide a higher density, and this land use amendment would allow a multifamily development that would provide a transitional land use between the single-family residents to the north and to the west and the Civic Center campus to the east. This amendment would allow for more development of the site that has been vacant for a number of years and is adequately serviced by utilities and transportation. Any development on the site will be required to comply with the Simi Valley Municipal Code requirements and guidelines. The proposed change would allow an affordable senior housing development that is accessible to commercial services, health, and community facilities, and public transit. Therefore, in staff's opinion, this request meets all the criteria to authorize the applicant to move forward with a formal general plan amendment request. Based on the analysis of the required pre-screening criteria and staff's evaluation of the proposal, staff recommends that the city authorize GPPS-2020-01 for further processing as a former general plan amendment to change the land use designation from civic center to residential very high density, and to allow concurrent processing of a zone change, plan development permit, and affordable housing agreement. This concludes staff's presentation, and we are available for any questions.
Okay, questions to staff?
I have a question, Mayor.
Yes.
Ms. Santos, you said that this lot has been vacant for several years. How many years exactly has this been vacant?
Thirty-eight.
And it was purchased, from what I saw on the report, it was purchased by the Simi Valley Community Development Agency. And can you tell me what the Simi Valley Community Development Agency's purpose was when it existed?
I can jump in on that. So the Simi Valley Community Development Agency was the city's redevelopment agency. It was created in 1980, became active in 1984, and among the charges of the Community Development Agency were to provide affordable housing opportunities in the community.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I do. I have a handful of questions, if that's all right.
Sure.
First of all, I understand that initially, Mini Mansions wanted to do something comparable or similar. Is that accurate?
Yes.
And at that time, was there a pre-screening general plan hearing at that time?
Yes.
And so, and at that time, you're saying, where did it get in the process, and why did it, can you help me understand why it didn't go through?
The process, the pre-screen request was approved, I believe, on a 3-2 vote, and...
And so in other words, this kind of hearing at that time was approved at a 3-2 vote? Okay.
At that time, they're given one year to proceed with their application, and through their own evaluation of maybe the input that was already provided, they chose not to proceed with that project. That was their choice.
Help me understand the difference between medium, high, and very high density, because the sign, as you drive by there right now, in fact, I have a picture, if it says medium density. I believe the memo said high density. This is asking for very high density. What would the difference be in a number of units that would be support on that piece of property?
So the moderate, the sign says moderate density.
Right.
And that was the statement on the sign. That's a, basically a cap of 10 units per acre. The very high land use is upwards of 35 units per acre, which is about 31 units on the site. And in either case, a development could potentially apply for a density bonus, which would up either density. So, and high density is at 20 units per acre, which is in between high and very high.
10, 20, and 31.
35, essentially. Those are kind of the caps.
Okay. Okay. Page three of your report says this change allows for three or more stories, I think is what it's asking for, in high, in very high density. How many, I mean, they're suggesting a three-story unit. Could they come back with, I mean, does, if we were to consider going forward and making it very high density, are there limitations on height, or any of that, of that nature?
The council would be the final authority on this at the end of the day. So even if you approve it to go forward tonight, it still has to run through neighborhood council, planning commission, and then come back to the City Council for final approval. So if there is, the direction tonight to the applicant would be, you should not exceed three stories if that's what the council is desirous of, but at the end of the day, you would have final approval of the project, whatever the height is.
Got you. And that, you bring up one of my next questions. In the report, it referenced the neighborhood council report, so I take it with Mini Mansions. It went to the neighborhood council state. Is that correct?
Don't believe it did, no.
No, it...
It never did.
No, they did community meetings.
They had their own, the applicant had several meetings on their own with the neighborhood, not neighborhood council.
Oh, I guess, I guess what confused me is they showed a diagram of different ways that they could be configured, and it said, these are the different things shown to the neighborhood, maybe it was neighborhoods.
Neighborhood, not the neighborhood council.
Not the neighborhood council.
Correct.
Can you tell me what a garden apartment is?
It's a nomenclature, kind of a walk-up apartment that has exterior entrances to the outside versus an interior corridor situation.
So all of, so this design would have everything facing outwards, and they'd have stairs that would take them up to the third floor?
I think when the applicant does his presentation, they can give you their preliminary concept of their schematics.
Okay. I had a couple of questions, and their comments. Councilmember Lister actually covered one of them, the difference between the very high and the medium. My understanding is when Cabrillo spoke to the, I've been contacted by somebody in the neighborhood, and they were under the impression that it was going to be a 20 to 22-unit apartment or senior housing. So is that something that you guys were aware of, or that we were not, those weren't numbers that we were familiar with?
So the applicant provided very different variations of the project to the community, and they actually explained a little bit further on what they felt was going to be the most benefit, beneficial for the site.
Okay, all right, thanks, Jennifer.
I'm sorry, who extended it?
The applicant, the applicant provided a community meetings during that time to get input from the neighboring, from the neighbors. And they showed different variations of different types of developments. They're actually going to show that in their presentation tonight, and this is what they came up with as the most viable for the site for them.
Okay.
Okay. And then the other thing, I know there are things that we can request of the applicant as we go along. So one of the biggest concerns I heard from somebody in the neighborhood, and mine also, is parking. And I think this came up when we discussed it with Mini Mansions also, is that there is a shared driveway that goes back to the county. Is there, I would like to see the applicant possibly get permission from the county to have shared parking on that back access, because the way their design is, it would be very easy to do that. The county never uses that space up, so I would, I think that would be a good thing for...
Just a sec.
Siri just came on my phone. I wouldn't even, I didn't even say Siri. That's funny. So I'd like to see them do that, and I'd also like to, Mayor Mashburn has mentioned in the past story polls, and I think this would be a good project where a story poll might come in handy, especially because their proposal right now is the one story on the front, which will be nice, because that will be lower height, which will match the surrounding areas, but it's going to go back to three, three stories. So I'd almost like to be able to visualize from the street, from Avenue de Simi, what the three stories is going to look like, and possibly from the senior center and for the two houses to the west of it. I think that might be beneficial. I don't know if that's something, that'll be my request of the applicant, is that we could see something like that.
We could specifically ask for that, if you include that in your list of recommendations, and that'll be helpful to get that up front.
Okay, thank you very much. Those are my questions. Thank you.
Mayor, may I ask a follow-up question too?
Yes.
Are there other developments in Simi Valley that are three stories?
Well, yes, there are several developments that are three stories right now, if you're talking about under the currently proposed, or...
Just in general, just because I know that's a concern, that, and I have heard that in public, that there are no three-story buildings in Simi Valley, and so I just want to clarify. Are there three-story buildings in Simi Valley? Are there three-story residential buildings in Simi Valley?
Yes, on Tappo Canyon Road, Patricia Avenue, Jefferson Apartments.
Behind the mall.
Multiple three-story complexes.
And we have residential buildings where there's one story and then it, like, you know, graduate, just very similar to this?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, I just wanted, thank you.
I'm sorry, I did have one more question that I forgot, if I might. I realize this is coming to us this year in 2020. Do they, if this were to be built, does this count towards RENA numbers, their new RENA allotment, or is it in current?
I don't, Sean, what's the timing, Sean, what's the timing on the new RENA? I don't think it's until next year, is that correct? October of '21?
Because, the reason I ask that is because part of what we're required to do with the new RENA is we have to change our general plan to allow for more residential. And by doing that hypothetically, I realize this is just a pre-screening, if we were to do it now, basically, we don't get to capture that benefit. That's what I'm afraid of, and that's why I'm asking, can we capture that, I mean...
I have a clear, that's actually not correct. Whenever we build housing, whether it's through, like when we did the Barbers Project, same exact situation, we changed the general plan and created a specific plan for that project. The housing that gets built from that will count towards our overall RENA numbers.
For, down the road, the new allotment, not what we're...
Also be mindful that we're doing the housing element update currently, and that's going to be adopted by October of 2021, and so we can also look at this potential property if we want to wrap that up in our housing element, so.
However, it should be said, there was a thing in the New Housing Accountability Act wherein if you reduce density in one area, you've got to show a comparable increase in another. In other words, if you're banking sites to increase, if you want to change the use somewhere else, this could be relevant for that, because if we're increasing here, you may want to do that as part of a scheme of decreasing over there. Not that you are planning to decrease, but let's say you change a use, and technically it would be a decrease, then this may, so there is accrediting in that sense also, to be mindful of.
And this would apply, or, I mean, is there a timeframe? Does that crediting apply right now, if we were to do this now?
I would also add that we, the units count towards RENA once the building permits get approved, so many of the projects be approved in one year, don't get built to a year or two down the road. So that happens very commonly. So it will, at the end of the day, count towards RENA. The fact that it's not in our current housing element or in our general plan doesn't negate that either.
Sean, I think the question is, does it count in the current RENA that we're in now, or is the one that starts the next, with the sixth or fifth, I forget which one it is?
Yeah, like I said, the new one's going to be adopted in 2021. This project will not get through the planning and construction process.
But if we approve, I understand that, it's just that...
It'll be for the next, it'll be for the next cycle. It'll go into the, these units would be approved for the next RENA cycle, would be counted towards...
Even if the general plan change happens?
That's correct.
Correct.
It's when the permit is issued.
And just to clarify, and I'm so sorry. Part of that, what you have to do is to change the general plan to allow for those units to be built.
Correct.
Correct?
The City Council will eventually do that.
Correct, I'm sorry, and you will come up with an allotment, and so this, hypothetically, this particular project, even though it's done before you've done that process, would still be listed then to the 2020, to 2021 change?
Yes. Correct.
Thank you. I'm sorry, Mr. Peres, I can ask you a question while you're up here. Have we ever failed to meet our RENA requirements for low and very low-income residential?
Again, the city isn't in the house-building business. We make sure the land is available for housing to be built, and unfortunately, the development community isn't building as much very low or low-income housing, even though we have land, you know, or processes to encourage that density bonus and all the rest of it. So a lot of the housing that does get built in Simi Valley is in the moderate category or in the above-moderate category. Currently, we are supposed to have, I believe, 518 very low, low-income units in this current housing cycle, and we've only completed 43 as of yet.
So we are way behind on what we're supposed to meet for...
Like almost every city in California is the same way, is correct.
But it, does it, does, I mean, that's less than 10%. So we have less than 10% of what we, as a city, are required to build for low and very low housing in the city of Simi Valley.
Yeah, we're currently behind in pace here.
And so we'll probably be even further behind if we don't approve this. Thank you.
I have a question for you. The previous plan, I remember discussing it, it was pretty heated. How big was it when it was finalized, the final presentation we received? What was the number of units?
Again, these are all just concepts, these buildings. We don't, they give us an idea, but this, that project was roughly around the same size, it was in about the 28 to 35 unit range, but the concept was similar, a three-story building with one bedrooms.
38, I believe it was 38.
30.
38?
And they...
And it had less parking, I think, was the biggest concern, was the parking.
That's correct, yes.
And I think through...
The problem was they want to park on the senior center lot.
Yeah, that's where someone had a harebrained idea of giving the senior parking to that project. So anyway, so we don't know what size it was, is what I'm getting.
They ended up, the council ended up recommending to bring it down to 25 units, so, but the original proposal was for 38 units.
Okay, okay. And they originally planned for something like 24 or 25 units, and then when they got to planning, it suddenly went up to 30-some units, and then it came back, and council said, no, 20-some units as they originally requested.
Actually, I'm sorry, actually, their original proposal was going to be for 38 units, and then when they came to council and during the community meetings, the council recommended that they drop it down to 25 units. And that's what caused them to not move, you know, a combination of other things that, that's what caused them to not move forward with the formal application.
Definition of a senior for this project?
So typically, you have two different thresholds, either 55 and up, or 62 and up, and so the applicant can explain what they're thinking.
Okay, okay. And explain to me, if you could, the civic center zoning.
So the general plan land use designation is civic center, and so it's for basically public buildings, and there's quite a variety of non-government things that might be allowed. But to do a residential project, we had to, it's not allowed under that current designation, so that's what's bringing us, for us tonight. But typically, what you would envision in civic center is public institution-type of buildings.
And this may be an unfair question, but, you know, when we're up here making these kind of decisions, we're doing it for the future, and I mean, a long future, you know, maybe 50 years. And has anybody done any studies on what we're going to have to do as a city to expand city buildings and property for different city services, that we'd be giving up that land for additional parking, or teen center, or other things that a civic center would typically have? Is there any studies that say, what are we going to need in the next 25, 30 years in the way of square footage? Is, in other words, is the senior center going to have to grow and expand?
I don't think we've done a study. However, we do have three and a half acres... I don't think we've done a study. However, we do have three and a half acres directly west of City Hall that could accommodate any growth that we would have. But I would be hesitant to assume that our government would be growing much. It may be very stagnant going forward. I would not see any future growth right now.
So our three and a half acres that we have, though, we could change the zoning and build apartment buildings.
You could, you could do a lot of different things on that property, that's correct. But that, that is not being considered tonight, and that's a, a future that we could deal with at that time. We, the council has contemplated different commercial developments on that property and some things that could generate revenue. Those are all options. The, there are a number of different things that, that three and a half acres could be used for.
And then, help me here, I think in the previous attempt to develop that, it was determined that while the city owns the property, that it can't really sell the property and take the revenue and put in the general fund or anything. That, am I correct there? It's not like we're giving away a whole bunch of money.
The opening comment earlier tonight was, it was purchased by the community, the city's redevelopment, development agency. And so for the purpose of that, it's for expensive use for housing. So that's, you know, there's not a lot of other options that we can do with this particular parcel that's on here tonight. We're not going to put it commercial use or sell it.
No, but, but yeah.
Yeah, so the, the property was purchased with redevelopment. When redevelopment was dissolved back in 2011, among the requirements, the state was, the cities and redevelopment agencies were to dispose of surplus property. We went through the exercise with the state of California on what to do with the properties that we have. We only had this property that was unspoken for. The state has agreed to allow the city to retain this property for future development, which is undefined. So it doesn't necessarily have to go to housing. But we would not be able, any revenue that the city were to get from the sale of the property would have to be distributed to all the taxing entities in the Ventura, in Ventura County. So if we sold it for rough number of million dollars, we wouldn't keep a million dollars. We would keep only what we would get based upon our percentage of the tax revenue that we would have gotten from that. So we would, we would keep probably roughly 13% of that money.
So are we, are we required to sell this, or could, could it be a lease option where we, if someone came to us and we said, well, we'd like to retain the city's ownership of it because we would very much like a teen center in 50 years, we will lease you the property? Is that an option?
It, it is certainly an option, but we would, whatever revenue we have would have to be distributed with the, the other taxing entities on a percentage basis.
Sure.
What we have talked about with the applicant, Cabrillo, is approaching all the taxing entities in the county and getting them to waive their portion of the money that we would get off of this. So this, if the city were to, and, and again, conceptually, the city often will write down the cost of land for affordable housing projects, or in this case, donate the land as part of the pro forma for the property. If we were to do that, then the taxing entities could cry foul because the property wouldn't be sold. So we have talked with the, the applicant that if, if that is your intent, then you need to get the buy-off from all the taxing entities in the county, that they will not claim any of the money or any of the, any portion of, of an assessed value of that property at, at some later date.
Mayor, if I may, you know, what I'm hearing from my colleagues on the dais is extremely disappointing. What I'm hearing is that, you know, you would rather sell this land than use it for its intended purpose. This was intended to be used for development. This was intended to be used for our low-income seniors, which are struggling right now. And it's not a 50-year down-the-road problem. The National Alliance for Homelessness shows that 20% of our homeless are over the age of 50.
Councilmember, we're not saying that.
We have many seniors that are homeless or on the brink of homelessness right now, not 50 years down the road, right now.
None of us said that. We, we're just getting information. And that's not appropriate.
You're putting words in our mouth that were not said.
The questions that are being asked are not conducive to support of this project because it is low-income or because it was for seniors. That's why it was turned down 10 years ago, when it should have been approved the last time that it came before us.
The questions being asked, we're doing our fiduciary responsibility, is my opinion. We're asking the questions that we need to ask. So I will speak for myself. I prefer you not speak for me. Thank you.
Well, I, I would like to see support for our low-income seniors that are struggling right now in the middle of a pandemic, so that we do not increase our homelessness issue. And if we're thinking about fiduciary responsibility, then we should think about the cost of homelessness.
Councilmembers, you don't know what I'm going to vote. So why are you saying that?
I'm just saying, if you were asking about our fiduciary responsibility, then we should think about the cost of homelessness. And if we house our low-income seniors, then we wouldn't incur that cost.
I know. That's why I approved voting for the sale of the Park District property for the low-income senior apartments. So yes, I do have that concern in mind. So I just would like you to not say what I'm thinking or how I'm voting. So can we please move on? Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, we'll move on. Okay, we'll hear from the applicant.
So, there we go. If the applicant would like to share a screen, we'll proceed with the applicant.
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, perfect. Mayor Marshburn and council members, I'm Jim Bizel, Senior Project Manager for the Rio Economic Development Corp. I would like to take this time and thank staff for all of their support. CEDC has been developing affordable homes for over 39 years, and we have two affordable apartment projects within Simi Valley. One of them is a senior project called Camino Esperanza, which has 31 apartment units. We would like to create another senior project on this subject site. Our first community meeting was held on December 5th of last year, which we presented a blank canvas to-
I'm sorry, excuse me for just a minute. We're having trouble hearing you. Is there possible maybe you get closer to your microphone or something? I know that we want to hear every word, and I'm seeing the mayor.
Okay. Is this better?
That appears to be.
Okay. Our first community meeting was held on December 5th, which we presented a blank canvas to listen to the community to develop a concept. Our second meeting was on January the 27th of this year, which we presented a couple of site plans. The last meeting was on March the 5th. The subject site was purchased with redevelopment process. There are eight taxing entities that have financial interest. We have written to them all requesting they waive their rights. We've heard back from the county superintendent of schools, and they said no to our request so far. We are planning to meet with them to see how we can all work together on this. If CE, if CEDC is unsuccessful with our request, this will make this project a no-go for us. There are only 11 senior projects within Simi Valley, which provide 714 affordable units, 263 market rate units, for a total of 977 senior apartment units. Simi's population was estimated to be in 2019, 125,006 13. Of that, 33,008 90 was in the age group of 45 to 64, and 13,177, age 65 and older. Simi Valley's population is getting older, and there is definitely a need for senior housing. I request your approval of the general plan pre-screening. And now I would like to turn it over to Mark DeChecco to go through the process that we went through in the community meeting to develop our site plan.
Thank you very much. Can everybody hear me okay?
Just a little bit louder, please.
Okay. Okay. First of all, thank you very much, Honorable Mayor and city council members. Thank you very much for the staff. And actually, thank you to the community as well, because we spent a lot of time trying to get input and, and getting, getting the input from our, the neighborhood. As Jim mentioned, what I'm going to do is, the staff report was actually very thorough, and staff has been very supportive and, and worked, we've worked very well together. But I, what I would like to do is, I'm just going to very briefly sort of share how we went through the process with the, with the neighborhood and let them know what, how things were going. As Jim mentioned before, our very first meeting with, with the neighborhood was on December 5th. And at that meeting, we did not propose a project. What we did was, we showed them where the site was, what our intentions were, at least in terms of, of putting a project on the site for the seniors, and then, and then getting their input as to what they would see there. And as some of the council members mentioned, traffic was a concern, parking was a concern, the access to the senior center was a concern. We talked about, we talked about the trees on the site, and, and there were neighbors from the adjacent community, there were, there were representatives from senior centers, there were also members of the staff, and even the, the adjacent homeowner to the west was at one of the meetings as well. So we did try to get as much input as we could from the adjacent neighbors. And so after the first meeting, we, you know, we talked about heights, we talked about parking, we talked about adjacencies. I know that there were issues with the previous project, and as was mentioned earlier by members of the council, a big, a big part of the project that was previously proposed was a shared parking arrangement with the senior center. But what we heard loud and clear from the neighborhood was that that was not going to work for them. They would much rather have any parking that has to be done, has to be taken care of, on the site itself. So we looked very seriously at that, looked at other sorts of items that they had brought up, and then we came back to the, back to the neighborhood with a series of options. And I'm just going to go really sort of through them briefly. You know, there was, there were comments in the upper left-hand corner, there were comments about, okay, what happens if we make it all one story? How many units can you get on site? And so they said, okay, well, the pros for that is we get everything on, on site. The cons there, we don't have any parking on site, and we only get 20 units. So we're trying to get a maximum number of units to house the maximum amount of seniors possible. And so this is the way we go about doing it. So then we looked at, okay, well, what happens if we maintain all, there are some existing trees on the site, what happens if we maintain those as an amenity? How does that drive the site, what the site looks like? And in doing so with that, we realized that, you know, potentially, that puts more of the building up front to directly adjacent to the residential neighborhood, which is not necessarily supportable from there. And also to maintain the trees and to maintain a large open space, again, then we have to work out some other sort of parking arrangement, either with a senior center or with the county parking lot directly to the south. So in going through this process, and then also looking at, okay, how do we make a site, make a project that impacts the adjacent neighbor to the least amount possible? And so the thought was, okay, let's push the building as close to the senior center as possible, and actually put the parking on site adjacent between the, our building and the adjacent residences. So there's a buffer of a, of a distance. So working through all of those processes, we came along and we finally, and then we came back to the city, to the neighborhood and said, okay, here's the project. So basically, in the project itself, you can see that there's, there, can everybody see my pointer on the screen?
Yes.
Okay. The, the access, we did put all the parking on, directly on the site. We did line the building up so the shortest distance of the building is what's directly adjacent to the street. And then actually put a one-story element, we're proposing a one-story element across the front to break the scale of the building down. And so the taller portion of the building, it's a very narrow sort of strip, but all tucked directly inward toward the, toward the county building. All of the parking ends up being on the west side. So there's a large buffer between the residences to the west. And then that still maintains some of the trees, the existing tall trees to the east, and allows for a green amenity space for the seniors directly adjacent to what will propose in the future be some sort of pedestrian access directly to the adjacent senior center. So this was proposed, this project was actually proposed on our January 27th meeting. And then, which will, just to answer a question, but also tie into one of the, one of the questions that came up with one of the council members, is there is a distinction, there's a California Civil Code under the Unruh Civil Rights Act of a, a project called a senior citizen housing development. By, by us designating this project as a senior citizen housing development, it actually provides for a broader range of seniors to live, as opposed to being 62 and over. It brings the number down to 55 and over. It also gives additional protection and flexibility for seniors to say, especially seniors with abilities. But then it also provides additional flexibility for funding sources to make the project more sustainable. The issue that comes up in calling it a senior citizen housing development and trying to develop it with those particular restrictions and/or things that would actually liberate the project and make it more sustainable, we had to do a project of 35 units or more. Any project with 34 units or less does not qualify as a senior citizen housing development, and it doesn't open up opportunities in the city as well as Cabrillo would have to develop the project. So our last meeting with the neighbor, with the neighborhood was to show them this 35-unit project as opposed to a 30-unit project. You can see, the only difference is, it now, as the, the units that were added, were tucked way back into the corner and tucked back further away from, as far away from the neighborhood as possible, and tucked closer to the senior center and the civic center. And here, they'll cross-reference to see what the project looked like in the last two proposals. This is, this is the, the senior citizen housing development regulated project, which at 35 units, and this was completely this project at 30 units, it does not have those same sort of capabilities. But you'll notice, we still have all the parking on site, we still have the adjacencies, we still have the green spaces and those sorts of things. It's just, it allows us more flexibility, it allows for a broader range of seniors to be able to live in the project. Things that, that have come up so far, at this point, again, this is not, this is just for the pre-screen, so this isn't actually the project itself yet, but just to let you know, there's no intention for us to go any higher than three stories. It doesn't make economic sense, and it changes the way the building has to be constructed, so it's not economically feasible to do so. So we have no intention of going taller than three stories on the project. As far as the project itself, in terms of a garden apartment, this particular, because it's a three-story apartment, and because we want it completely accessible for seniors, it's going to have an elevator. So typical garden apartments don't have elevators in them. And so there's an internal, internal hallway and an elevator access, so all of these units are disabled accessible. There was some comment about, okay, we see that there's a potential for a shared drive, a shared driveway with the, with the county building to the south. It is our intention to push as hard as possible to get that connection through there. We don't technically need it for fire access or other sorts of purposes, but at least, even if it's just an emergency vehicle access, we think it's a very desirable thing for us to actually pursue that, so we're going to continue to do so. It was brought up about story polls. We have no, no issues with providing story polls to actually show you what the project would look like, what the bulk of the project would look like as we move forward and actually submit an actual project. So, you know, we understand what that means, and to allow the, the community to visualize a, a project. So I, I don't think we'll have any problem with that at all. And then, RENA numbers, yes, we're all struggling with RENA numbers at this point. So, you know, at this point, having, you know, we believe we've got a project that actually will work. We think it's a benefit to the city. Directly adjacent to the senior center makes an incredible amount of sense for our per- side- makes an incredible amount of sense from our perspective, and I'm, we're very much open to any questions you might have, and again, thank you very much for this opportunity and thank you also for the robust discussion even up front. This is great.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions for you that don't relate to the actual structure or the, even the property, but in the, I'll call it the business plan, is, is there a method by your management that you'd be able to prevent overcrowding? In other words, if, if we suddenly had too many people wanting to live in one apartment complex, is that possible, permissible, legal?
Do you want to step into that one? Jim, you need to unmute. With our unit, it is a one-bedroom unit with typically two people, a husband and wife, or two people can actually live in that unit?
Actually, we're not hearing, can you, again, a little closer to your mic or louder, please?
It is a one-bedroom unit and actually, two people can live in a one-bedroom unit. Higher than that, we could say no to it.
Okay, so you do have that type of control?
Yes.
Okay, because I would think that, that could add to the parking problem and just the density in general if there was no way to legally control the amount of people that live in each unit.
Yes, and if I could add to that also, you know, we were the architects on the Camino Esperanza project that's also in the T V Valley, and what we're finding is that the majority of occupants of these types of projects, very few of them actually drive anymore, and that's another major benefit of this particular project, because of access to the senior center and direct access, there's a bus stop directly next door, so, but we certainly understand your concern and that's, that's certainly one that the neighborhood brought up, because there will be, although the residents themselves may not drive, they certainly may have visitors and things like that that need places to park, so yes, absolutely, that's, that's a concern. Something else to understand is that Cabrillo is developing this project to hold it, and so they have, they have management on site, they have services, you know, social services on site and other sorts of things, so it's not like this will be a park, will be some apartment project that doesn't have a lot of oversight.
Yeah, okay, thank you very much, I appreciate your answer. Other questions?
Yes, if I could ask some, if that's all right? Let me understand your statement about, you have approached the eight other county agencies to see if they would waive the percentage that they'd be allotted. Did I hear you correctly, you said that the Ventura County Schools has said that they would not, was that what you stated?
That is correct, and we're hoping, we're planning to meet with them and to find a way that we can work together on this. I think it's more of a process that everyone needs to go through, and we're waiting to hear from all the other, well, actually, one entity has already agreed that they would waive their rights. Cuyahoga Water is planning to take it to their board on the 7th for approval, so it's just a matter of going through the process and working with the various entities.
So, so you've not yet heard really from six of them yet or had disposition, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Can you, is it my understanding, is this for the, the intention is for the very, this is very low income, not low, is that correct? Is, is?
This would be for 50% AMI and possibly below.
I'm sorry, say that one more time?
This will be 50%, 30 to 50% AMI.
So that puts that in the...
Is that low or very low?
It would be low and, not very low. Because very low is really, very low is 20% AMI. So it's moderate would be the 50 and low would be the 30.
So you're saying it's a low income but not very low income?
We are not planning on that, correct.
Okay. And do I understand, do I understand your statement that generally garden apartments don't have an elevator, but this plan does, is that correct?
That's correct.
And what is the parking ratio that you are, I realize it's all just conceptual, but that you're showing right now with 35 units, what's the ratio to parking?
I believe, we have, we have one, we have one space per unit and one extra stall above and beyond that.
Gotcha.
And, and for, for reference, the Camino Esperanza project, we did, they did a little parking study and that's a 30-unit project, it's got 30 parking spaces and typically, no more than 20 have cars in them.
Yeah, that, I've driven through that several times and there's always ample parking.
And so I just want to take it back to the low versus very low issue, I just, so of these units, you envision them all being very low, what, so what does that actually make, make the rental rate likely to be per unit?
If I could get back to you on that, because I don't have the latest chart, and I would be actually maybe putting a number out there that's not correct.
Fair, fair enough, just wanted to kind of understand, I understand, thank you very much.
And I need clarification, if you would, on the driveway, the, the talk, and maybe staff could do that. Sean, could you explain that to me? The use of, or the double use of the driveway?
Well, well, I think you're referring to that north-south driveway where at the top of the driveway comes off of Avenue de Cimé. Under that scenario, the driveway heads south to the bottom of this, bottom of the site, potentially with agreement from the county, there could be a punch through of that block wall there onto the existing county parking lot where the courthouse is.
Oh, so you could do a, like a circle?
Yes, and you could, then you could exit out towards the senior center or exit south through the parking lot towards the DMV.
Okay, now I understand, thank you, thank you.
Yeah, and as a follow-up to that, we may be, in our initial discussions, we, we may be restricted to that being for emergency vehicles only, but that's, you know, it would be nice to have full access, but we're, we're, we're open to having it for emergency vehicles only. Either way. But the intent would try to make this connection if at all possible because there's additional parking here as well as another meeting to be grabbed.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions? Okay, let's hear from the public.
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, go ahead, David, we have one Zoom speaker.
Yes, one Zoom speaker, Mrs. Drake, Ms. Drake, I'm going to unmute you now.
I believe she would have five minutes to speak.
Hello?
Yes.
Go ahead, please. Hey, my major concern, and I think this is a very important proposal, I think it is very needed, I think it is a good fit, basically, for the area specifically because it's next to the senior center, I think that would be great. My concern, I mean, just for today and for this particular request, is that the sign, when I saw the sign, and I don't know how long the sign is supposed to be up there, but the fact, you mentioned emails were sent out, who did the emails go to, can I ask that?
If you sign up?
Well, did I have to sign up to get emails? I didn't get any email, I only found out about... Anyway, my major, the fact that the sign said moderate density and anyone in the neighborhood, I don't know how many people are getting emails in the neighborhood, but anyone in the neighborhood that saw that and thought, oh, it's moderate density, that's pretty reasonable, that's not, you know, compared to the medium density, I live off of Rock Gate, which is the, the street that is perpendicular to Avenue de Cimé or directly across from that lot, and I think people will be concerned, yeah, that one, people would be concerned about, if they didn't get notified, and I do not get emails, I was, I didn't, I don't know when that sign up occurred, I, I only went to one of those community meetings, I didn't even know about the others, but I think the concern is for today and for this particular request, is that there's a big difference between moderate density versus very high density, and if somebody saw the sign and said, oh, moderate density, no big deal, which in fact would be no big deal, I think, my concern is that were people in the community adequately notified? And if anyone only saw the sign, which I only saw the sign, I did get a call from another person mentioning something about it, but I did see the sign and then that prompted me to go on to the site, onto the city's website and to look at the agenda item, and then when I saw the agenda item and that it was listed as very high density, I did call the city and somebody, and that was last Friday, and somebody did get back to me to clarify that, yes, in fact, it's supposed to be from Civic Center to very high density. And so, again, my major concern is the fact that I don't know that the neighbors were adequately notified, that it in fact is supposed to be from Civic Center to very high density, not Civic Center to moderate density. But this time, that is really my major concern. And I really hope, I think this is a pretty good design, but I really hope that you can get permission from the county to get that access through the back there. I am a little, I mean, it sounds like, I don't know what the percentage of seniors, you said not a lot have cars, 50% maybe, I don't know, so there may not be a huge amount of traffic coming out, which, you know, it's not exactly directly across from Rock Gate, there's a slight, you know, juxtaposition, it's a little off, I don't know, I don't know if in fact that's a concern about traffic coming out onto Avenue de Cimé and then the traffic across, you know, if there's any issue there because there is currently, I mean, you stop, but there's no stop sign on Avenue de Cimé, so I don't know if that would be an issue, but I just hope that we could get that access through the back there, that would maybe alleviate some of that. So that's really all I have to say. I think, you know, I've heard everyone talk about, or the council members mentioning, and I don't know all about the, you know, the requirements for low-income housing and senior housing, but I do think this is a good fit, basically. I, I am a little concerned about it going to three stories, that does concern me, I understand, you know, what was mentioned that to classify as a senior citizen housing development, it has to be 35 stories, I am a bit concerned about that, that there's any in-between to that, but I do think, as somebody mentioned, and I'm not familiar with, it's a story polls, I'm not sure what that is, but I'm guessing that's kind of a model of what it would look at like and what you could see the elevation and what the three stories look like, so that would be, you know, of interest to see that, just to see how it blends.
Okay, ma'am, your, your time is up.
Thank you. Very much.
Thank you very much.
Any other Zoom comments?
We have no other Zoom comments, we do have one email comment.
Email is from Robert Brooks. The posted notice board on the property states, you are discussing a change to residential medium density. On the agenda, it refers to residential very high density. That is not fair or proper notice to make a density switch like that.
No other email comments.
Okay, staff, a question. At the meetings where the, Cabrillo reached out to the residents, do you know if there was a size given or was it medium density, high density, moderate? Do you know if that was stated?
I'd actually defer that to the applicant to answer that question.
Yeah, the, there was, I believe, Jim, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't believe the discussion was specifically about a density unit, it was more about the number, number of units itself, not necessarily what that meant density-wise. Jim, is that your recollection?
Could you speak into the mic more so, sir?
Sure.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, yeah, I believe we, I, Jim can correct me, but it may have been mentioned, but I think the focus was on the number of units and not necessarily on what it meant in terms of high versus very high density. Is that your recollection, Jim?
That is, you are correct, Mark.
Okay, who decides what goes up on the sign? Is that staff?
That was a staff, staff requirement.
Okay.
So you're saying the staff made that sign or required the developer to put the sign up? I'm just curious.
The staff incorrectly provided incorrect information to the applicant.
Gotcha, okay.
Okay. So that, that goes back to the question, I don't like misleading signs, but I do understand that the, the staff report seems to be accurate and saying very high density, but then again, I have to sit and say, okay, do the residents all read the staff report on the agenda or do they go by the sign? So I, I want to, I want to look to the council to say, do we kick this down the road one time based on the error on the sign or do we move forward and?
Well, I, I just wanted, I'll give a comment and that and address the issue that was given in the public comment at the same time, that anyone who signs up for agenda items can, will get an, will get the agenda automatically sent to them for city council every single time, that's, I have that email, so I see what I get as a city council member and as a member of the public as well as a resident here. So anyone who got that, it says on the agenda and in the staff report, moderate to high density. In terms of the, you know, one of the public comments by Robert, by Mr. Brooks stated that he saw the sign and then he went and looked it up on the city, you know, on the agenda and saw that it was high density. So anyone that, you know, was, to me, it's like if you were really interested, you would look that up, just like when, when I see signs in my neighborhood of, you know, zone changes, then I'm going to look at, what exactly is it, what do they want to build there, like, if I'm really interested and I really want to provide public comment, like, I'm going to dig, I'm going to do a little digging and I'm going to ask around. And, and I know lots of residents have done that for, you know, all the developments that we've had, they see a sign, whether it's something that, you know, Parks and Rec is doing, or the school, school district is doing, or we're doing as a city, they're like, oh, something's being built there, and then they, you know, they ask around, they go to the agenda to see what is on there. So I think it, it's, it's not difficult to find out that it was for high density and I, I think we, you know, it was on the agenda, it was adequately noticed that there was going to be a change, so I, I say we move forward. I think it is of the essence, that's my opinion, it is of the essence that we help prevent more homelessness in the community, especially for our most at-risk low-income seniors.
Comments?
Do you want to? Because this is a pre-screening, I, I think I would also like to move forward with the, with the, the project. If it was not, then I would say that we wouldn't have, we didn't do fair signage, you know, that the, the community wasn't fairly informed, but this is a pre-screening and so we still have ample time to address those type of issues. It's going to have to go to neighborhood council, it's going to have to go to planning commission, they're going to have to reach out to the community again, and it's going to be up to Cabrillo to sell the, the community on this project. We do need senior housing desperately, and I don't think that's the problem with the community, I think their concern is more just the volume. But in looking at their new design, it is much more... But in looking at their new design, it, it is much more friendlier to the neighborhood. It mitigates the impact it would have on the houses to the west by moving the apartment or the parking over there. It does take the parking off the street, which was the biggest concern with the last project. And I, I kind of like the idea of sticking at a 20 to a 25, but I don't know if that's going to be cost-effective for, for this. So go ahead and let's look at the 30 to 35. That does take it from a second floor to a third floor. That's why I wanted to see the storyline, the story polls, because that will show the neighbor, the neighborhood exactly the difference on what it would be, because really, that's the whole, that's the difference of the 10 units is a floor. So if the neighbors can see the, the difference between a second story and a third story, that would give them a better idea in, in how it'll fit in to their community. I think it will be okay, but until I actually see it, you, you can't really decide. So, but I, I think we need to go forward with the pre-screening and allow the applicant to do the work. They have a lot of homework to do, you know, to get all those agencies to agree about the taxing, the tax and such. So I think it's, it behooves us to move forward with this at this point in time and see what they can do.
Okay.
Would it be possible to get Lonnie's opinion on what he thinks the importance of having a correct sign posted is?
Yes. Hi, Councilmember, Mayor Pro Tem Judge. I think that if it were any other stage in the process, you'd have to re-sign it. So the public has a right when you approve a project or if the planning commission is having it to have that sign, if it's a material term, okay? And this is a material term. You're hearing that the density is obviously critical for some. So having said that, you know, unless planning staff has a different opinion on the history of pre-screens, that error is not as important in the pre-screen. It's up to the council to decide how important that error was and do you want to keep an eye on it? And you, and you can't have that inaccuracy during the actual steps. It won't be, you'll have to change it then. So again, it's up to the council at this stage, based on that type of error and your evaluation of the importance of that error.
Thank you very much. My concern is during this time of COVID, when we don't have people in there, because obviously this would attract the crowd, that's my concern. But I am also of the opinion that this move forward, because the key word here is pre-screening. This isn't an approval. This is just a pre-screening.
Yes. And my understanding is we sent out public hearing notices and did those public hearing notices that went out to the neighborhood, did they say?
Yes, the public hearing notices went out.
Correctly.
I'm sorry. Within residents and occupants within 300 feet of the project site, in addition to the legal notice, which is published in the Ventura County Star. So that's two other methods of notification that are required.
And those were correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. And my, my comments are based on mailers that went out to the neighborhood and them being correct and this being a pre-screening. You know, yeah, we, there was a small hiccup, but I don't think it's an overwhelming error that could not have been, the people had the ability to learn exactly what was meant by other means. So I think we should go ahead and go forward with it.
And if I could just make a couple of comments, I would, I would agree, Mayor. I'm just mindful that Gabrielle, if I understand your timeframe, you had a meeting on December 5th, January 27th, March 5th, and then the whole world erupted about 10 days later. So I recognize you were in the process of doing something that could benefit our community and then I'm, I'm assuming there has been one major delay because of COVID-19. Now, that doesn't change anything, but I'm just cognizant of what that means. And I recognize too, that this is, as, as the mayor said, this is a pre-screening time. We, we realize that there is definitely need for senior housing and particularly low-income senior housing, and I would love it to be very low-income senior housing. Just last week, we approved senior housing that would be on the other end of the spectrum. It's nice that we can have development that meets the needs of all of our very different seniors. But that being said, this is still in the pre-screening process and I think it's critical, of course, that the community and the neighbors can weigh in and discuss. And I do think when you see that sign that says moderate and know that that's the exact same density as yours across the street, you wouldn't think anything of it. And so I see where there might have been, or might have been a dismissal of, well, that's fine, it's just what I have. So I, that is a bit problematic, but I agree, given that this is pre-screening, given that there will be many more, many more opportunities for discussion with the, with the community. I, I think it is wise to go forward with this as well.
Yeah, I'd also like to add that, what a coincidence that it's right next door to the senior center.
I don't think it's a coincidence. I think it's a blessing.
Well, okay, call it what you want, but I, I think that has a lot to do with it. And if you look just a little ways to the east, there's a big senior complex. And with the transportation, it certainly seems like something that we're not going to give the rubber stamp to, but we should be going forward and looking at and trying to develop. And from what I'm seeing of the diagrams and exhibits, there's an awful lot of thought going into what kind of impact it'll have on the neighborhood and it's a very good neighborhood. And I think when you put all that together, we have the potential of working out and coming up with a very good project that brings us the affordable housing that we need.
And Mayor Mashburn, if I could add to clarify some of the things you were looking for, any recommendation would include installation of story poles, possibility of a driveway into the county lots and potentially a controlled occupancy of the units. Some of the, those are the three things I heard, if there's any others.
You know, I, I wouldn't argue the story polls, but what came to mind is right behind the project is a courthouse, which is, I don't know how many stories it is, but it's a big building. And I think the senior center just to the east, it is also quite high.
That's why I wanted them to have a comparison. I think that would help to see where it is.
It's not, it's not.
Exactly, exactly.
It would work in that sense, yeah.
Especially because it's going to be towards the, it's the two-thirds southern part of the project, so not right on the street.
It, it can almost work as a selling point.
Exactly.
Okay, I see what you're saying.
I think it'll be a positive.
Yes.
To show the neighborhood, yes.
Yes. Okay. And then the controlled, I, I think the Esperanza, I think is the name of it, at the other end of town. That seems to be a very well-run complex. And if they run it like that, then we would have no, no problem here. But I, I am a little bit concerned that there is some type of management on scene to make sure that we don't have multiple people, multiples of people living in one-unit apartments and bringing multiple cars with them.
So like you could explore the onsite management provision?
Yes. And what was the other one? I think you had three.
To try to get that driveway to the county parking lot.
Yeah, from a fire safety standpoint, I think that's, that's a great idea. And I'm sure in the process, when you get moving with the fire department, they're going to look at that and they'll think that'd be a very good idea. So I, I don't think that's something that we as the council needs to require. It's just, I'm glad that the applicant's looking at it. I'm glad that planning's looking at it. And I'm sure when you get with the Fire Prevention Bureau, they'll, they'll have something to say about it. So I, I don't, I don't think, I, I certainly don't need to have you write it down that we're saying do it. I'm just, I, I trust that you guys will be looking at it. Guys and ladies, by the way.
We could leave it off the mandate if that's your decision.
Well, it sounds like they're already looking at that, so I think we're fine.
Yeah.
Mayor, may I make a motion?
Certainly.
I move to authorize GPPS-2020-01 for further processing as a former general plan amendment to change the general plan land use designation on a 0.885 acre parcel from Civic Center to residential very high density to allow the development of a 35-unit senior apartment complex with direction to include the concurrent filing of an application for a zone change from residential medium density to residential very high density, a planned development permit, and an affordable housing agreement.
Second?
Motion and second, call for the vote.
Judge, vote yes.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you very much.
Motion passes unanimously.
And thank you very much and rest assured, we'll keep the neighborhood involved.
Yes, thank you. And by the way, one last comment, all of our apartments, we have onsite managers that live there.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thanks. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, next item on the agenda is item five, public statements. This is a time for public statements on all items other than public hearings, appointments, and information reports. All comments submitted by email prior to 12:00 p.m. today have already been provided to the city council and will be made part of the record. However, they will not be read by the city clerk at the meeting. Comments received by email after 12:00 p.m. noon today up until the beginning of this public statement item on the agenda will now be read for a period of 30 minutes, spending three minutes on each email. Every effort will be made to read all emails into the record, but some emails may not be read due to time limitations. Mr. Mayor, unless you have any other comments, we can begin reading the public statements.
Yes, I'm ready to go. Thank you.
Thank you.
First email is from Eric Chen. Dear Mayor Mashburn, members of the city council and the residents of Simi Valley, on October 2nd, 2020, the U.S. Census Bureau announced that the census data collection operations will continue through October 31st, 2020. The Census Bureau is working to complete data collection as quickly and safely as possible while ensuring a complete and accurate count as it strives to comply with the law and statutory deadlines. Therefore, for our non-responders, please don't delay. Respond to the 2020 census as soon as possible, either online at www.2020census.gov or call 844-330-2020 or submit your completed paper form that you have received by mail. If a census taker knocks at your door, please answer their questions and feel free to ask for their census taker identification. Currently, Simi Valley's self-response rate is approximately 82%. When you respond to the census, you help your community get its fair share of the more than $675 billion per year in federal money to help support your schools, parks, hospitals, streets, and roads, and other programs that are vital to Simi Valley. Furthermore, businesses use census data to decide where to find their workforce so they can create jobs and secure employees. Developers use the census to build new homes and revitalize neighborhoods. Local governments use the census for public safety, infrastructure, and emergency preparedness. And residents use the census to support community initiatives involving legislation, quality of life, and consumer advocacy. Thanks again to the responders to the census and remember that everyone in Simi Valley counts. Sincerely, Ventura County, 2020 Census Complete Count Committee. The following people sent in the same email. I will read their names and follow with that email. There are 28. Kelly McManamam, Ruth Mann, Cassandra Douglas, Aleah Ewing, Tracy Ewing, Matt Fenton, Cameron, Andrew Barman, Braden Schwartz, Miriam Sobwi, Marlini, Jessica Shaw, Lane Sarglino, Catherine Plyler, Kyle Ballard, Tim Wiedemeyer, Desiree Ewing, Martha Neeson, Diane Robertson, Lehone Peterson, Kevin Walker, Jennifer Miller, Vanessa Guerrero, Aaron Hollander, Jennifer Campos, Candace Cardona, Kathy Howe, and Jessica Shaw. Dear City Council, on August 5th, Raul Avila, a candidate running for office in Simi Valley, commented on the link to a volunteer form for an organization that addresses racism. He wrote, "This is where we flood them with fake applicants. They can't find the real ones," end quote. The next morning, on August 6th, that organization's volunteer form was flooded with racist and violent phrases such as, quote, "gas chamber, the furnace design, killing N-word is my business and business is good, literally Hitler, N-word lips, to kill N-word and kill the lesser races." A month later, Mayor Mashburn stood massless with Raul Avila and posed for a photo for Mashburn's candidate Facebook page. Mayor Mashburn, did you know that Raul Avila's horrendous views and actions? Do you support what he did? Do you support what was written? Are you aware of his views? And now that you know them, do you still support candidates that think that way? City Council, do you denounce Raul Avila's actions and views? Simi Valley, is this who you want to vote for? Raul Avila, a candidate that calls racists to action? Do you want to vote for Mashburn, who poses for photos with candidates like Raul? There are two other candidates running for water board and five other candidates running for mayor. We have options, Simi Valley. We need to use them. Violence has no place in our beautiful town. The next one is from Rebecca. Good evening, City Council. On August 5th, excuse me, this is exactly the same email with an addition at the bottom. Why does city leadership insist on adding to Simi Valley's racist and divisive legacy? Remember, reminder for everyone, Black Lives Matter and request for Mayor Pro Tem Mike Judge, please resign. From Linda Tran. I wonder how a city council, over a year behind in meeting minutes, will pass something more than a feel-good proclamation. Remember that the drastic backlog of meeting minutes only grow and they begin after former Mayor Huber's term and during Mayor Mashburn's term. Something else that shouldn't be left on the back burner, an earthquake plan. Southern California has been expecting a big one for a long time. I've been hearing it would happen every year for the past decade. When it happens, I hope city council actually has an updated plan in place on evacuation routes, stock shelters, and a makeshift hospital. If it happens during COVID, I'd expect the necessary modifications to be made and citizens updated in a timely manner. If not, let this email serve as the record that the council was warned yet did nothing. As for the upcoming election, Mr. Mashburn says, "The residents of Simi Valley deserve a mayor that listens and serves with integrity." I agree, but were you talking about yourself? Weren't you the one ignoring and claiming systemic racism doesn't exist in Simi, even after many people have shared their experiences and said otherwise? As for serving, what exactly have you done for the environment in the past two years? What has once Simi actually accomplished? Has anything concrete come out of the council you led in the past eight months? Isabella Vogalar. I am sure you've heard of the disgusting flood of racist, xenophobic, hateful messages and threats that bombard the RISE Board application forum. If you have not, you can find a post about it on their Instagram at @RisesSimivalley. RISE is a progressive organization that was recently founded in Simi to address racism and discrimination. Mr. Avila wrote, and I quote, "This is where we flood them with fake applicants. They can't find the real ones." He is in part responsible for the overflow of messages that the RISE staff had to wake up to and read the next morning. RISE had no affiliation with Raul. They never reached out to him. They had never even bothered anyone. They were a new, up-and-coming group looking to acquire a bigger team. There was absolutely no reason for their There was absolutely no reason for their forum to have such horrible responses. From social media on both Mayor Mashburn and Raul's part, it is apparent that the two are friends and that Raul views Mr. Mashburn as a mentor and a colleague. I am curious to know, Mayor Mashburn, are you in support of Mr. Avila's actions? If so, do you think you are finally, or I'm sorry, fairly representing all citizens? If you are not, can you please denounce them? It's one thing to have differing opinions or points of view, but it's another to advocate for hate and not denounce your previous actions or even recognize your mistake after such offensive comments were made. While Raul is supposed to be running as a nonpartisan candidate, he is a Republican, he is in a Republican group encouraging the defamation of a progressive organization. Word limit met. Grant Keller. Dear City Council and Mayor Mashburn, Mike Judge should resign to heal our city after the inappropriate use of a meme depicting septic tanks as a way to stop rioters. If this was the first meme, then I think it would be fair that he stay on as Mayor Pro-Tim. This is the fourth or fifth one, and there should be accountability in local leadership for patterns of language that incite racism. Best, Grant Keller. Delaney Moss. Raul Avila is a local candidate running to be on the water board in Simi Valley. On August 5th, someone posted a link to a volunteer forum for Rise, the local group that addresses racism. Raul commented, commented, "This is where we flood them with fake applicants; they can't find the real ones." By the following morning, the volunteer forum was flooded with applications that contain phrases such as "to kill N-word," "killing N-word is my business and business is good," "kill the lesser races," "literally Hitler, N-word lips," and "gas chamber furnace and design." A month later, Mayor Mashburn posted a photo in which he stood beside Raul Avila, both without masks. Mashburn posted this photo to his Facebook candidacy page. Mayor Mashburn, were you aware that Raul Avila possessed such hateful and intolerant beliefs? We cannot elect public officials that openly display such blatant racism and anti-Semitism. Mayor Mashburn, how will you assert yourself as an anti-racist? What steps will you take to show that you do not tolerate such heinous behavior from a candidate that you support? From Sofia Bagdassarin. I was recently made aware of some comments by Raul Avila, a candidate running for office in Simi Valley. He posted on a Nextdoor group that people on there should click on a link to a volunteer forum for an organization that addresses racism. He wrote, "This is where we flood them with fake applicants; they can't find the real ones." The next morning, that organization's volunteer forum was flooded with racist and violent phrases such as "gas chamber and furnace design," "killing N-word is my business and business is good," "literally Hitler, N-word lips," "to kill N-word and kill the lesser races." A month later, Mayor Mashburn stood maskless with Raul Avila and posted for a photo for the mayor's candidate Facebook page. I would like to ask if the City Council would denounce Raul Avila's actions in this case? Would you please denounce the residents who turned in racist and disturbing fake applications? Violence has no place in our beautiful town. The next one is from Reese Luce. Dear Simi Valley City Council, On August 5th, Raul Avila, a candidate running for Callejas Municipal Water District, Division 1, in Simi Valley and Oak Park, commented on the link to a volunteer application form for a Simi Valley-based organization that addressed racism here in our hometown. Candidate Raul Avila wrote, "This is where we flood them with fake applications; they can't find the real ones." On August 6th, that organization's volunteer application submissions included racist and violent phrases such as... They're the same ones I've already read. Mayor Mashburn, did you know about candidate Raul Avila's horrendous views and actions? Do you support what he did? Do you support what was written in submitted applications? Are you aware of Raul Avila's views? And now that you know them, do you still support a candidate that publicly and shamelessly organizes Simi Valley citizen divide our community? City Council, do you denounce Callejas Municipal Water District, Division 1, candidate Raul Avila and his actions and views? Simi Valley knows and deserves better. As demonstrated by Raul's divisive call to action to attack an organization successfully established to address racism and divisiveness in our community, Raul Avila has proven his lack of capacity to lead Simi Valley towards unity. Further, Mayor Keith Mashburn has maintained his record of carelessness and willful ignorance by endorsing a candidate like Raul. Maximum words meant. On August 5th, 2020, Raul Avila, a candidate running for the office in Simi Valley, commented on the link to a volunteer forum for an organization that addresses the racism in Simi Valley. He wrote, and again, it's the same as previous. Mayor Mashburn, are you aware of Raul Avila's horrendous views and actions? Do you condone such behavior? Were you previously aware of his views? If not, now that you know, are you willing to denounce Raul Avila's actions and views? As the wife and mother of POC in Simi Valley, I find these actions completely appalling. I have heard members of the City Council say there is no racism in Simi Valley, which is completely false. Given these uncertain times, my family does not feel safe. How do you feel to have tax-paying homeowners in Simi Valley feel unsafe due to the racism within the community? Violence has no place in this beautiful town, and I highly encourage the City Council to condemn racism and violence instead of allowing it to escalate. Best regards, Candace Thompson. Sandy Gill. What is the city going to do to bring in affordable housing in Simi Valley? I would like my 27-year-old and his girlfriend to be able to move out of my house. They were both employed before COVID, but everything in Simi is too expensive. Jimmy Rogers. Dear City Council, On August 5th, a candidate running for office in Simi Valley, Raul Avila suggested people should submit fake applications to a local organization for him to speak out on issues important to Simi Valley residents. One can only assume he did so to discourage and silence them. His words were, "This is where we flood them with fake applicants; they can't find the real ones." The next day, the organization's volunteer forum was filled with a slew of explicitly racist comments, vile comments, comments invoking Hitler and the Holocaust, gas chambers, killing N-words, and lesser races. While I won't conflate the content of the remarks with Raul Avila, I will say that someone running for a public office should be held to a higher standard than what has been shown of his person's character. He asked that the organization, which is led by a woman of color, be bombarded with fake applicants, and he was certainly obliged. As a private citizen, Raul Avila is free to do as he pleases. But Raul Avila is also running to serve Simi Valley residents in public office. That means all Simi Valley residents. Mayor Mashburn, you've been pictured with the water board candidate and gave him your endorsement. I ask that you reflect on the company you keep. I ask that you and the rest of City Council denounce his actions and the actions of residents who submitted the harmful comments. Thank you, Jimmy Rogers. This one is from Robbie Hildago. Regarding public comment, DES order amendment. On September 21st and 29th, I provided summaries to council of developing legislation and requested amendment and supplement of DES Number 1 to ensure the strongest possible protections for our local business and residents. On September 21st, I contacted the governor's office directly to request foundation to ensure our businesses would not suddenly become exposed to insolvency when our local ordinance was set to expire. Thankfully, on September 23rd, Executive Order N-80-20 was signed by the governor, extending small business protections in Simi Valley under DES until March 31st, 2021. Unfortunately, however, DES Number 1 remains tied to the expiry of N-28-20 and its extensions rather than to the state of emergency. New federal CDC and HHS orders combined with AB 3088 and the N-28-20 suite of orders have created an overlapping patchwork of legislation, all of which empower, within their language, the legal basis for local ordinances such as ours to continue providing the strongest relief possible to our businesses and residents beyond executive order term. In order to provide these critical protections to our businesses and residents, DES must amend Section 9 of DES Number 1, modifying its expiration to the expiry of the California State of Emergency or thereafter, as so many California cities have already done. There are over 15,000 children in our city who must attend school from their homes, full or part-time, for the rest of the term. It is unconscionable to expose our students to displacement in the midst of a pandemic simply because we refuse to act. Haura Almarath. Good evening, City Council. I have taken the time out of my day to bring your attention to a problem that our city is facing, a problem of hypocrisy and ignorance. On August 5th, Raul Avila, a candidate running for the office in Simi Valley, commented on the link to a volunteer forum for an organization that addresses racism. He wrote, "This is where we flood them with fake applicants; they can't find the real ones." The next morning, on August 6th, that organization's volunteer forum was flooded with racist and violent phrases such as we just heard. In a sequence of events that I can only refer to as horrifying and extremely distressing, Mayor Mashburn stood maskless with Raul Avila and stood for a photo for Mashburn's candidate Facebook page. Mayor Mashburn, were you aware of the comments Raul Avila had made? Do you agree and support his narrative and views? If you were not previously aware of them, not that you are, do you still support candidates that think that way? City Council, I beseech you to be on the right side of history and to denounce Raul Avila's comments, actions, and views. Simi Valley, I ask you to think about others before you vote. Consider the views the candidates hold and the impacts they have on others. Word count met. There's one more that I need to reread. Sorry for the delay. This one is from Tim Wiedemeyer. The Simi Valley Police Officers Association wants to thank the community of Simi Valley for their generous proclamation of appreciation to the police department. We understood this wonderful gesture was made in the spirit of mutual cooperation and support between our community and their police department. We thank the four council members who wanted to acknowledge the proclamation for their continued support. Your efforts are noticed. We hope in the future the entire council will clearly see moments like this as a time to come together, not to seek ways to add to the opportunistic anti-police narrative. We all need the entire city's leadership to join with their police department in acknowledging positive moments like that proclamation. We want the entire community to know how rewarding it is for us to work every day to detect, prevent, and investigate crime while doing our best to keep everyone safe. The job of policing is wide-ranging, but at its core, it's crime prevention and social work as we seek to solve community problems. We thank the community for recognizing we are all on the same team. Respectfully, Tim Wiedemeyer. He did not submit one with the mask that I read at the beginning. It was inadvertently added, and that was the last email.
Okay, Councilor's comments.
Yes, I'd like to address the issue that Ms. Gill brought up about affordable housing for youth. While I'm glad that we're making a step forward tonight, at least, in our last decision to get affordable housing for seniors, we do need to encourage and think about our younger generation and that we have three-generation households. So I hope that we all keep that in mind as a City Council, that we need to provide affordable housing for our youth as well. In terms of the other comments about Mr. Raul Avila, I would like to state that I denounce any hate speech. Any speech that incites imminent lawless action is not protected by the U.S. Constitution, according to the U.S. Supreme Court. And any speech that is dividing our community and that is inciting violence or promoting hatred and prejudice and bigotry is not acceptable. It's not acceptable in the city; it's not acceptable on the dais. And it promotes the division in our community when we have people who support, people who use that kind of speech. And we saw that in the over 30 comments denouncing that kind of speech. So I want to make a formal denunciation personally, on my own behalf, that that is not acceptable to me, and it's not okay for our community. And it only increases the trauma that people of color already feel in our community. So on behalf of myself anyways, I want to apologize for that kind of speech. And I will tell you that I will hold people that use that kind of speech accountable, and I do not accept it.
I think Councilmember Louvena said that very well. I wrote something a little bit similar. The comments posted by Mr. Avila and the repercussions are completely unacceptable in our community. And we, as leaders and individuals, all need to stand up and denounce this type of behavior from anyone. And I hope, and I will do that, and I hope everyone else will do that so that we can have less divisiveness in our community, we can start to all work together, and we can become a great community for everyone to live in. Thank you.
I would like to just discuss several things, and then I'll go to that comment. I wanted to thank Eric Chen for reminding us about the Census Bureau and that the deadline has been extended to October 31st. If I understood the nature of his letter, Simi Valley has been 82% compliant, which means 18% uncompliant. And so I would encourage, if you happen to follow within that 18%, that to be counted, and that it definitely helps with services and a variety of things, and will guide policies and decisions for the next 10 years, and is a very important thing to do. I wanted to thank Tim Wiedemeyer for his comments about the police and gratitude for the proclamation. In fact, one of the things I was going to say tonight, but I don't know that I will, was I appreciated the awards that were given to the outstanding officers. In fact, there was a front-page article about the Simi Valley Police Detective Casey Nicholson who earned the 2020 Officer of the Year honors. There were many others that were honored, and so I just think that I wanted to comment further on that. So thank you, Tim, for sharing that. With regards to the letters that were received about Raul Avila, interesting, I happened to actually have a conversation with him today, and he is of Hispanic heritage, and his expression to me was that he had heard that there was comment to this and that he was just dismayed because that is not the type of person he is. And so I was gratified to hear him say that, but I absolutely disavow the comments that were made. It's not appropriate, certainly, to incite activity that would in any way be irresponsible and would denigrate a movement. And so I certainly also stand with comments that were being made. But I wanted to speak, at least, to that conversation that I... My interaction with him shows that his desire... is good. He obviously made a poor choice and was not appropriate, and I'm sorry that the actions that happened because I certainly didn't denounce that activity.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I too had a meeting today with Raul Avila, and I too believe exactly the way Elaine does about him. He is a person of color, he has great love for this city and this community. Although I do denounce, and obviously I'm disgusted by any of those comments that were made on that website towards that group, and I do believe that they should immediately turn those files over to the police department so they can be investigated to see if there are any possible threats there.
As far as Mr. Avila goes, I absolutely disavow any racist remarks, postings, any actions that he has taken that would be decidedly racist. I am 100% against it, and there is absolutely no room for any racism in Simi Valley. I'm at a loss. I learned about it this evening, and I will look further into it, and I like the idea of speaking to the police department about further investigation on exactly what took place. As far as the photo goes, yes, that's me and that's him in the photo. I attended a tour of the Collegus Water District, and he also attended the same tour, and that's where the photo was taken. And that was a couple of weeks ago, I believe, so I don't know when he made these comments, but end result is I had no idea that he would make those kinds of comments, and again, I disavow them. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, the next item on the agenda is Item 6, the Consent Calendar, and there are no resolutions for consideration this evening.
Okay. Number 6, anybody want to pull anything?
I'd like to pull 1 and, I'm sorry, 1 and 3, Mayor.
1 and 3, I wanted to pull, I forgot which one it was.
It was number 3 from me as well.
Okay, 1 and 3, which one was the bicycle one?
2.
2, okay, I want to pull 2. I'm sorry. 2, 3. Okay, so we'll start with 1. Whoever wanted to pull 1?
That was myself, Mayor. Yes, I know it's approval for the minutes of the meeting of July 27th, 2020, which is a while ago. I know that we had a transition to new city clerk, and Ms. Blanco is doing her very best, but this was one of the reasons why I wanted to pull this was because, and I know we have it later on the agenda, so I'll bring it up there as well, you know, the responsibilities that a clerk has, especially on an election year, are far and wide, and maybe, you know, if we didn't wait to abolish CIAC, then, you know, that work could get done, because this is really important, to make sure that we get, you know, the minutes approved, because we are behind, and I don't blame that on Ms. Blanco. It's been a while, but we shouldn't, it shouldn't take that long. So I will bring that up when we get to that item. The other comment I wanted to make about consent item agenda number 1 is that I know there are public comments, and not all the public comments get read because we have the half-hour time limit. If I could get those, if we could get those sent to us, because it always says, you know, we will receive them, and then I don't receive them until, and I didn't see the public comments, they weren't mailed to me, I didn't see the rest of them until, you know, this July 27th, until now, until I got this report. And so I would like those sent to me and to all of my colleagues, and not, I don't want to have to wait until approval of the minutes to get all the public comments that were submitted, whether or not they were read, you know, now, because people can still submit public comments, but if I don't see them, then I don't know that they're there, and we can't address the issues that the public has. So that's my request for 1.
And I would actually like to add, it's interesting, this is July 27th, which is, so usually we're just two months behind, two months and a week. When I first joined, it was over a year. So I just, actually, I wanted to commend that we're moving in the right direction, it's getting closer and closer and closer. So I just, I just wanted to bring that up, that I'm seeing some great catch-up efforts, and so, but I concur that it's very helpful to see all of the, all of the attached, all of the minutes, excuse me, all of the letters that are read before and after. But you've been very good to give us the ones before noon and occasionally...
Yes, absolutely, I agree. I commend you on that.
We've gone all the, it's just occasionally when there's more that goes beyond 30 minutes, the ones that come afterwards, we have received, sometimes we would like to receive them all. So that's a good thing.
I will know, yes, we are catching up, and Lucy is doing a great job, and we're pulling people from other areas that get us caught up. So there are some gaps, but we're getting a lot closer.
You're getting closer and closer.
We're getting closer, and we will, and we apologize, we will send you after, the next day after the meeting, so Tuesday after the meeting, we'll send you all the emails I came in, so you would have them.
Thank you.
Okay. Number 2, like, I just have comments on number 2, I don't think you need to come down for questions. Number 2 is the police officer bicycles, EVikes, the electrical bicycles, there's a grant, and they're going to use some money to buy the bicycles, and I'd just like whoever is in charge of purchasing to remember that there is a local vendor in Simi Valley who sells to police departments a great deal throughout, I think, throughout all of California. And the only thing that I ask is that he somehow be notified and can bid on the bid. I'm not saying give it to him or anything like that, just simply it'd be nice if our hometown businesses are aware and able to bid on those types of purchases. That's my comment as far as that goes. Thank you.
Mayor, if I can make a comment on this item as well?
On the 2?
Yes.
Yeah.
I noticed on Page 2, it says that part of the funds, $500, will be used for the NIVRS reporting, writing courses, and I know I've talked to several people who have, you know, said they have felt put off from even making reports, so I wonder if that's part of the training as well?
Well, we'll have to ask chief on that.
Can I remember the training for NIVR?
Yes.
That's something that's...
Turn on the mic, please, on the top. There you go.
NIVR's training is just for a different way of reporting crimes from the agency to the Department of Justice. So what we do right now are the FBI's crimes that are what we call the FBI Cart 1 crimes, so those are limited to felony crimes, and so now what we're doing is, and this is nationwide, we're going to a different format, reporting format, so we have to give our records technicians training to report that to the Department of Justice.
Okay, so that's why only 2 people need to be trained then, for that?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, number 3.
Yes, I did have some questions about that. My questions are with regards, basically, 3 deals with authors authorizing an additional management, Assistant City Manager, basically, to help defray all of the work, and basically, the history is actually accurate, that Ryan Gaylor was promoted and made our City Manager, and his assistant, he was assistant at the time, and his position was not filled, he was just promoted. We just figured he could do 2 jobs at once, so we appreciate what you've been doing. I guess my question is, you were also the Economic Director at the time, and that was your primary responsibility, is that correct?
Yes.
And so, as I read the description of what you want done, I don't see any mention specifically of Economic Director. In my mind, that's, I could see that being the absolute justification for that position, because that would bring income, do a variety of things for our city. Can you, I mean, and I know that you serve in that capacity, but truly someone needs to run, to be the manager of the city. Is that, what are you envisioning for that position, and could this position instead be the Economic Director, or have you already earmarked someone else on staff that is now doing that full-time, or what? Just wanted you to speak to that.
Yeah, so with this recruitment, the end result is I'll be looking at reorganizing our office and allocating out duties. It may not be the Assistant City Manager that does economic development. It may be a different classification that will work with me and someone else in the office to do economic development. It doesn't necessarily have to be an Assistant City Manager. I think there are, I'm looking at all the different roles and duties that we have in our office, and they're varied, and I need to put the right people at the right locations. So it may not be an Assistant City Manager that does economic development, and it's not always that way. Many cities have an economic development manager that is a lower-level position that is very effective at doing it, and they work very closely with the City Manager.
So can we stipulate, if we just go ahead and say, yes, this is great, and vote for it, and consent, that tied to that is that an Economic Director be part and parcel or be an important part of that consideration? Is that fair?
Oh, I can tell you absolutely that I need someone to do economic development. I can't continue to do it all, that and with all the other duties, so.
Right.
That position, that task will be filled through this recruitment, and shifting around of positions, that task will be filled.
And do you feel, and I'm sorry, just one more question, do you feel in staff, will you have that right person to do that, or do you think that that's, those are talents and skills that maybe should be looked for in this recruitment?
I think you have the right people. I'm keeping my staff in the dark, they don't really know.
Yeah.
What I'm envisioning in my head.
So the way I'm reading it is you are looking to hire an Assistant City Manager who will fill the needs of the city, and then at that point in time, you're going to look at strengths and determine which strengths each employee has and put them into the right slot.
Thank you, yes. I've met with all the, I've met with all the staff in our department, we've had conversations about what their strengths and weaknesses are, what they want to do in the organization, what do they want to do on a career, how they want, how I can help them succeed, what the needs are of the department. I've met with all of our, we have, we have a fairly large department, I've met with all the management employees to talk about all those things, so we can, I can further people's careers and further the city's goals.
And that will also help in succession planning.
Absolutely.
There you go. Thank you.
Mayor, if I may? I didn't want to cut you off, Councilwoman Lutzner.
Go ahead.
I guess I'm even more concerned now with your comments, because, you know, if you're not even sure, so my first concern about this, and my first question was about, you know, our fiduciary responsibility. We're not sure how much longer this pandemic is going to go, but we have definitely seen an economic downturn in the city. I know that we cut positions, with the exception of one that we gained in the police department in our budget in June that we passed, and, you know, my concern is, is this in the budget? If you're not even sure right now, what I'm hearing from you, what this position will be, or what it entails, or what you need, I know that we're supposed to revisit the budget in December, is it, or January?
We'll have a mid-year review, I think, in January, February.
So I think I would...
We don't close the book, we don't close the December books until mid-January.
I would feel more comfortable because of where we're at right now financially and not knowing whether or not we're going to go from purple to red and reopen business, we have no idea. And we're about to embark on the winter season where it gets colder, and we're already seeing further economic downturns and closures in Europe and other countries that have reopened and now they're closing again. We're seeing New York City schools that are closing down again. My concern is that we don't know yet what the future holds, and so I would rather wait to fill this position until that mid-budgetary mark that we set for January, February. That would also give you more time to figure out, you know, if you need an Assistant City Manager, if you need something else, like a lower-level position, I think that would make me feel more comfortable, so that we know, you know, what exactly the city needs. That's my opinion, is that we delay the recruitment. I, you know, suggest alternative 2, because I want to know where we're at financially.
I could tell you that whatever I do would not, will not, the department budget will not grow. It will, it will not exceed what we currently have today.
But the budget is based on projections that we said we would revisit in January and February, and that's why I want to wait to revisit it till January, February, to see if, you know, where we thought we were going to be. That's what I want to make sure, that we do not overextend ourselves, and again, you just mentioned that you're not sure, you know, what exactly the position's going to be, if you're going to, you know, reshuffle some positions around, it might be less than an Assistant City Manager, which, you know, would be a lower, you know, pay grade, and, you know, if there's going to be reorganization, I would just as well wait until January, February, so that we make sure that we are financially responsible, and make sure that we have the funding to be able to fill the position, and that the position that is needed is truly needed, especially when we are shifting things right now, and, you know, there are different skills that are being required of everyone, from teachers to city managers, which mean technology, access to drop boxes, access to, you know, all the different tools that we need during a pandemic, and probably for the future anyway, so that's why I would rather wait till January. It's not a no, it's just no right now. I would wait till January.
I have a question for you. What type of timeframe would it take, would the recruitment reach out to the outside?
I am anticipating doing internal recruitment.
Okay. So that would shorten the timeframe?
Yeah.
Okay. Do you have a guess on how long? Did we give you the go-ahead today?
I could conceivably have it filled within 3 weeks.
Okay.
May I? I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Confirm, that would also help. It's not just economic development, it would help with other, you know, like, for instance, you were the Assistant City Manager for many, many years, and I think there was always a City Manager over you, correct?
That's correct.
So, yeah, so there's a need to have an Assistant City Manager.
Yes.
And not only for the economic development part of things.
That's correct.
That would just be part of the plan, if you're agreeing. Okay.
Do we currently not have any Assistant City Managers?
We do not have any Assistant City Managers.
Do we have Deputy City Managers?
We have 2 Deputy City Managers.
Just a question, what I'm hearing is that when you say...
Not Kavanaugh, but that's...
Oh, I'm sorry. There's that, you see this...
You can wait, she's going to talk.
We discussed back and forth, she told me to go first. I'm sorry, sorry, Mayor. Apologies. You envision this to be an internal hiring, so does, this is actually speaking to Councilmember Lewveno's comments, if it's an internal promotion, does, you're suggesting possibly it's internally hiring, and that would not bring in another, then that would fill a vacancy elsewhere? Are you looking, are you looking to then bring in someone else to another position? I guess that's what I'm trying to understand.
Well, I mean, it all depends on who the successful person is, but it would be a, since we don't have an Assistant City Manager today, it would be a promotional opportunity.
Sure. But not, doesn't necessarily 100% mean we will be hiring, bringing in an additional person to the city staff. It could mean that.
It could, but that is not likely the outcome.
I hear you. Okay, thank you, thank you for understanding.
So, it's, I'm sorry.
I was just going to say...
Councilmember Kavanaugh, go ahead.
I was just going to say, hiring managers, I kind of understand where you're at right now, and it's very difficult to talk about, give us specific answers when your decisions haven't been made, and this can affect other people. I happen to like the idea of looking for a person to fit what you need to fill into your team. You're building your own team, and that's what we need here, and I don't feel that we need to wait. I feel we need to have somebody working on economic development right now. We've already not been having that go on because we've been busy with COVID, we've been short a person. I think our City Manager's Office needs that team that can work together and fill all of those positions and bring economic development to the city. So I'm all in favor of you moving forward with this.
Yeah, I too agree with Councilmember Kavanaugh, and based on what we're hearing from the community, economic development is a very large issue that is talked about so much, and during this election time, I think virtually all the candidates are discussing the need for economic development and want to see us do well in that area. And then we have to remember, and sometimes it's difficult, but our type of government is, we set policy, and the City Manager runs the city and the employees. We only hire 2 employees, and that's the City Manager and the City Attorney. We don't tell the City Attorney which attorneys to hire or where to place them, and we don't tell Public Works how to pave the roads. We set the policies, and I think that's important to remember. So with that...
And I would agree with what would be said, I'm all, the only concern was nowhere did it mention... I'm, my only concern was nowhere did it mention economic development in this report. So I just would add that, Council, that as you've spoken, that that be included in this interviewing process, that that be very much guiding the back of what is being discussed.
I think that's what we heard from the city manager.
Mr. Mayor, do you want to separate this item number out from the rest of the consent or just do the whole consent calendar?
Yeah, I move to approve consent item one and two.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Luevanos. Okay, motion second for consent one and two. Call for the vote.
Please vote yes for Judge.
The motion passes unanimously.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, on consent item three, I'd like to make a motion. I move to authorize the initiation of recruitment to the position of the assistant city manager.
I'll second.
Okay, motion is second on number three. Consent three. Call for the vote.
Judges, a yes vote.
The motion passes with Councilmember Luevanos voting no. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, next item on the agenda is 7A. Second reading of ordinance 1313, repealing sections 2-3.201 through 2-3.208 and subsection 2-5.12H of the Simi Valley Municipal Code Regarding the Citizens' Election Advisory Commission, CAC, and Determination That the Action Is Exempt From the California Environmental Quality Act. The reading of the ordinance is as follows. Ordinance number 1313 and ordinance of the City Council of the City of Simi Valley, repealing section 2-3.201 through 2-3.208 and subsection 2-5.12H of the Simi Valley Municipal Code Regarding the Citizens' Election Advisory Commission and a Determination That the Action Is Exempt From the California Environmental Quality Act. And staff is available for questions.
And I just would like to say something before we move, I realize this is a second reading.
Comments?
Thank you. I was just going to say that I recognize that CAC has done a lot of work and sometimes, but I know the reason why this is a second reading and why we're going forward. But I came to appreciate when they had a training for new council members, the CAC, one of the CAC members was instrumental in running that meeting. And I don't know, I'm sure he coordinated with Lucy. I'm sure that that was a joint effort. But it was very, it was a very informative meeting. And so I just, I just recognize that they have done a lot of work behind the scenes through the years. And so I just want to say thank you for the many who have served for many, many years, even though that we're taking the step at this time.
Okay. Anybody else comment?
You know, I, I'm glad we're taking the step because it's, we don't need CAC anymore. I wish this was implemented immediately. And the concern is, you know, that there have been missing candidate statements from people that are running for office. And I'm concerned that, you know, I'm not sure whether that's something that CAC does or does not do. But it does concern me, and that's why I wanted it to be terminated earlier. But, you know, I'm, I'm just glad that we're taking the step. Those are my comments.
Mr. City Manager.
Yeah, I can just clarify with the, with the candidate statements. CAC is not involved with the candidate statements. All, our role is, at the city, is we forward the candidate statements onto the County Elections Division, and they take it from there. That's why we contract with them to, to put together a sample ballot, put together mailings, and do all that work. So unfortunately, the errors occurred, but it did not occur on our end. It was at the county's end.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
I'd just like to say that even though I'm a supporter in many ways of CAC, I also, after listening to the presentation by Councilmember Luevanos at the last meeting, it brought back to mind that what I consistently say is reduce government and reduce unneeded expenditures. And that's why I changed my vote when I did. And I, I think it's the right thing to do based on it's a very good organization and it was a good committee to have. But we've gone beyond that now, so it's time to erase it and move on. And I think that's what we're here for, is to keep government as small as possible and to free up the time of our staff so we're not spending money on meetings that we really and truly do not need. So that's my comments as far as this goes. We're looking for a motion.
I move to adopt ordinance number 1313.
Second.
Motion is second. Call for the vote.
Judge votes yes.
The motion passes unanimously. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, the next item on the agenda is item 7B. Second reading of ordinance 1314, approving a change of zoning classification Z-S-746, amendments to the Brandeis-Bardine Institute-specific plan SP-S-9, amendment number five, and adopting the mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring plan for property located at southwest corner of Taple Canyon Road and Guardian Street. The reading of the ordinance is as follows. Ordinance number 1314 and ordinance of the City Council of the City of Simi Valley, approving a change of zoning classification Z-S-746, amendments to the Brandeis-Bardine Institute-specific plan SP-S-9, amendment number five, and adopting the mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring plan for property located at the southwest corner of Taple Canyon Road and Guardian Street. And staff is available for questions.
Questions? Comments? Motion?
I move to adopt ordinance number 1314.
I'll second.
Motion is second. Call for the vote.
Judge votes yes.
The motion passes unanimously. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, there are no items this evening for agenda item eight, new business. And Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, next item on the agenda is item nine A, city council member reports.
Okay. Reports, we'll start, let's do it differently. How about Elaine?
Why, thank you. I'd love to start. I appreciate it. On Tuesday, September 22nd, actually, the city volunteer dinner was canceled. And so that didn't occur. But I just wanted to acknowledge and say thank you. I know we made videos to the many, to be displayed on the Zoom meeting, but it, I'm sorry that that great fun event had to be canceled, and that just is indicative of this year. But there are many, many people who are volunteering, and I just wanted to say thank you. On Wednesday, September 23rd, I'm sure all of us attended the Ventura County Elected Officers' COVID-19 briefing. As was mentioned, at that time, we finally have, appeared to have moved, have met the rubric that would basically allow us to move from purple to red, but we had to maintain that for two weeks. I went online just, just before we came on the meeting, because I just wanted to verify that we truly had, we're still there. And right now, it has, of course, that can change because of the weekend. But at 5.5, as, as far as the number per 100,000, which means we've met that seven per 100,000 for two weeks in a row, which means as of midnight tonight, we should officially be considered in the red zone. I wanted to actually read, this was actually a letter that, that our city manager, Brian Gabler, sent to each of the council members. I'm going to actually quote from it, Brian, because I want people to acknowledge what this means. Once in the red tier, personal care services, restaurants, places of worship, movie theaters, gyms, and fitness centers, along with museums, zoos, and aquariums will be able to open for indoor operations with modifications. Stores with indoor operations that are open now can increase indoor capacity to 50% in the red tier. Restaurants can open indoors at 25% capacity. Places of worship, higher education, and zoos, museums can open indoor operations at 25 capacity or 100 people, whichever is less. Fitness centers and gyms will be able to offer indoor operations at 10% capacity. And so I just wanted to make sure that that was stated over the dais, so people know, as of midnight tonight, it appears that we have met this and they can go forward with, with this red tier. It doesn't mean we stop wearing our masks. It doesn't mean we still be as safe as we can be and operate in that way. It just means that there's a little bit of relief for our businesses that are struggling and, and more opportunities for them. So I wanted to, to mention that. Taking into the next week, I would say, and for me, every Wednesday, I also have the Task Force on Business Recovery, and that on the 23rd and the 30th. That is, as I mentioned, is in conjunction with the Chamber of Commerce and, and our, Bob Heber's office and with the city as well. The fun event that they're doing right now is that Simi, Shop Simi First, the Fall of Palooza. And I'm sure you've seen announcements online and other places. But just as a reminder to all of our residents, between October 1st and October 11th, save all your receipts for everything that you have shopped in Simi Valley. And on October 11th and 12th, from four to seven, you can take it to the Chamber of Commerce side or here at Sea Hall. Turn those receipts in for basically raffle tickets, and the grand prize is $1,000. It's just a fun way to encourage people to shop in Simi Valley. But get more information online. But I did want to mention that. On October 1st, I attended the SCAG Energy and Environmental Committee meeting. There were various presentations made. One of the concerns specifically was, was looking at different ways in the future where they might be able to categorize speeding or speed limits, as opposed to using the 80% rule, anyway, which will allow possibly cities to lower speed limits if it was felt necessary. That was just a discussion that maybe will be in the future. Of course, I, Councilmember, or Mayor Pro Tem Mike Judge would probably know more about that as he's on the Transportation Committee, but it was an interesting discussion. I just wanted to actually conclude with just a statement of sorrow and a statement of support. I'm sure many of you heard about the tragic deaths of Mark and Jacob Iskander, which happened on September 29th. The reason I wanted to bring that up, it was tragic just because it appears to be based on drunk driving. But they are members of our, of a congregation here in Simi Valley. The Archangel Michael Coptic, excuse me, the Archangel Michael Coptic Orthodox Church in Simi Valley. They were beloved attendees there. I know that a memorial service was held for them, a private service was held for them there Saturday morning. I've spoken with another, with one of their elders in that church, who, who has shared with me that this Wednesday, there will be a vigil for them held in Thousand Oaks. And so I just wanted to express, and I should tell you that, that vigil will be at 5:30 at the Ascension Lutheran Church in Thousand Oaks, called My Hero's Mark and Jacob Memorial Service. Anyway, I just wanted to express my condolences to that family and to the congregation and how sorry we are, but that as a city, we come together and are very sorry. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Kavanaugh.
First off, thank you, Councilwoman Lutzer, for sharing that. That was very heartfelt. I did not know they had a relationship here in Simi Valley, so that's wonderful to know. And my condolences to the family also. I did not, I only had the Wednesday elected officials call the last couple of weeks. Some of us have been very busy doing other things the last couple of weeks. I've gotten a lot of exercise, that's for sure. But I, but I did also want to just comment, Councilmember Lutzer brought up the Fall of Palooza. I was on the Small Business Advisory Committee Board when that first started. I don't even know how many, how many years ago, Brian? You know, as a-
Twenty years ago?
As a community member. And so I'm so glad to see that getting another, a shot in the arm. And we're going to start up and doing a lot more with that. I think it's, it's a great thing. I also, as part of that, I read on a Facebook post a couple of times, and people are doing a good thing. Start buying, your gift shopping, your Christmas, your Hanukkah, whatever, our local communities, mom and pop stores, our, our small stores, start buying your gift cards and stuff from them. That's going to help them survive. It's going to help our community survive. And it's a great way to get your Christmas shopping done, at Christmas and Hanukkah and Kwanzaa shopping done early. So I just wanted to throw that out there. So that's all for me, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Luevanos.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I also attended the Wednesday Ventura County Elected Officials COVID-19 meetings. And I know that our, our school district is talking about going back to school in person. So, you know, but we, we have to be mindful that if, you know, cases start to go up, that we're going to have to shut down again. So we need to continue wearing our masks and social distancing and not having gatherings. I know Halloween is this month. But, you know, I, I'm actually going to save money because I'm not going to buy my kids costumes. We're just going to go candy shopping. I gave them each a limit, and I said, you each can spend this much money on candy. I'm actually saving money on costumes, and they don't have to go beg for candy. So you might actually save money this year if you do that. But we are doing online activities with Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts via Zoom. So you can still have fun on Halloween without going knocking door to door. I just want to remind you that. I do want to wish everyone, yesterday was a happy, was World Teachers Appreciation Day. So I want to wish all my fellow educational colleagues out there Happy World Teachers Appreciation Day. I know it's been rough. I know, trust me, I know. So we appreciate everything that our teachers do for our students above and beyond. I did have a meeting on Thursday, October 1st, for the Clean Power Alliance Board of Directors. We did approve two new power purchase agreements. One was a 15-year renewable purchase agreement with Daggett Solar Power, which will give, give us a 32.3% total load, which is helping to meet the state requirements for renewable energy. It will create 500 construction jobs and 12 permanent jobs. It's located in San Bernardino County. And this is just a reminder for those of you that are looking for jobs for the future, this is the future. Renewable energy is the future, whether it's solar panel installation or, you know, constructing. This was actually an old fossil fuel power plant, so we're actually, you know, recycling a fossil fuel power plant for greener, cleaner energy, which is what we need right now to stop all these fires and the climate change that is really impacting us. We're seeing so many fires right now that we've never seen fires this large with 100,000 acre fires, you know, every year, multiple times. And we have multiple fires throughout the state that have yet to be put out. We also approved a 15-year amendment to Arlington Energy Center project, which allowed us to execute projects for storage. So one of the things we do at Clean Power Alliance is not just procuring renewable energy, which helps to bring your energy costs down in the end, but we also need to find out where to store that energy, because not everyone stops using electricity when the sun goes down. So those are some of the things that we look at in terms of storage. The other thing that I'm really proud of is that Clean Power Alliance increased, we increased our bill assistance program. So we had already helped 50,000 residents and businesses by offering bill assistance. So it's, it's forgiveness. It's like we give you credit on your bill. So instead of, you know, if you're falling behind due to COVID, if you're a resident, if you're a business, then you just get a credit on your bill. You don't have to pay it. So it's not like a loan. You just, you get it forgiven. And we doubled the program from $1 million to $2 million. So if you are a business and you were impacted by COVID-19 and you're Clean Power Alliance, Clean Power Alliance is, is your energy provider, please, please apply if you're a resident. You know, like I said, and you were impacted by COVID-19, please, please apply for those credits. In addition, if you use medical equipment, like you use a CPAP machine at home, or oxygen or anything that is required for a medical device, you also qualify for this program. So please, please apply, because there is money there for you, and that's what Clean Power Alliance does. And hoping that someday we will join the other cities that have gone to 100% renewable energy as a default, I will bring it up at 9B. Thank you, Mayor.
And I'll note the SCE has a similar program where they're providing backup power for people that have medical devices and things like that. So if, if anyone out there has a needed medical device, they can apply through SCE and get free battery backup with a solar panel.
Oh, nice.
Okay. Mayor Pro Tem Judge. I look over like I could see.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Not too much to report on my-
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Not too much to report on my schedule. Had a lot of citizens meetings in the last two weeks. I did attend the SCAG Regional Council and Transportation Committee on Thursday, October 1st. As Councilmember Lister mentioned, they are pushing forward in, in the legislature, most likely. This will come through the legislature eventually. A way that we can, a different way that we will be setting speed limits in our municipalities if this goes forward. No guarantee that it will. But it does make sense to me, as, you know, noted by the fact that I've tried to get speed limits lowered in our city before, and there's always a fight, because right now, the way our cities do it, and it's not the city's fault, it's the state's rules, the state actually kind of rewards bad behavior. By going with the 85th percentile of speed, people that go faster, you know, make the speed limit on streets go up, which is not always a safe thing, especially on some of our streets where we have residences that have driveways that empty out onto them. So we've seen that here in Simi Valley. And hopefully, it'll, it'll come to the, it does, there's nothing that's going forward means that the city has to lower its speed limit, but it gives the city the option to lower its speed limit and still allow law enforcement to enforce the laws. That's the big thing on changing the way speed limits are done in California. Second thing that came up at the Regional Council was, was our, part of the Go Human and other campaigns that SCAG conducts is, I think I passed it along to Brian about our Safe Cities Pledge, it's more like a Safe Roads Pledge or something like that, where we pledge as a city to make sure that our streets are safe for bicyclists and pedestrians. I think it's a good idea. I gave the, I gave it an email to Brian. He can distribute it to the council. You can read it. We'll look at it later. Maybe agendize it for a later date. That went forward. And on Friday, October 2nd, I attended the VCTC meeting. And the, wasn't really too much new to come out of that. There's no, no new projects by Caltrans in our area, except for the cleanup of the freeways. They're basically concentrating on the 101 and the 23. So that's about it for that. There will be some stuff coming up in the future. Hopefully, I'll be able to report on. Other than that, that's about the end of my report. I'm looking forward to us moving to the lower tier of the COVID status tonight, and allowing our businesses to get back to work. Thank you. That's the end of my report.
Thank you. For myself, I had a busy week and had to leave town for a lot of it. So not, other than the elected officials briefing calls, I didn't do a heck of a lot in town. I, I will take this opportunity, though, to say, we talked a little bit tonight about economic development. And all of us here can look at some progress we've made. If you drive down Cochrane and get almost to Sycamore, you're going to see Hobby Lobby is open, and the parking lot is full. And yes, my wife has already been there. And so the house is decorated. It's really, you know, we're contributing to the vitality of our city. Also, you can look at the Amazon facility on Tapal Canyon. I think they're moving in and rapidly going to fire that place up. And they're working on a second location. Both of those bringing 200 workforce level jobs that people can actually make a living and afford to stay in town. You look at the Griffin Plaza right here at Tapal Canyon and Cochrane, and look at the progress it's made in the residential care home there and the jobs that that'll bring. The mall, we have new mall owners we're talking with, and seeing new ideas come out. And I'm looking forward in the next few months to seeing some changes and some great ideas coming out of that. Madara, the brewery, is moving right along. I met with the owner. There's no indication that they have any intention whatsoever of not fulfilling their dream of opening that location. If you go inside, they're spending a lot of money. There's a lot of major change going on inside. So I truly believe we're going to have an opening there in the next couple of months. And that'll be another good place. The, you know, look what we, we did with the Hacienda Pepper Tree. And then tonight, we moved forward with the low-cost housing, affordable housing units. So we'll see how that goes. And I think that's it. But all I'm trying to say is, there's a lot of great things going on in Simi Valley. And you could often hear the negative, but if you look, there's plenty of good going on. And this council's doing a good job of keeping the economic development alive and moving in a very, very challenging time. And that's the end of my report. So we'll go to 9B. Future agenda items. We'll start with Ruth.
Yes, Mayor, I have two requests. I'm not sure if the first one is a request or not, but I, I saw that we had some comments via Zoom today. I don't know if the, the public had, like, full knowledge of that, or, because, you know, we've been using the same platform with the emails. But I'd like to know if we can do, like, a press release, or we can do that from now on so that people can read their own public comments, because we have some, you know, for the hearing, we had public comments via Zoom, but not the other public comments. So I, you know, and I've been asked a lot about that, like, because our planning commission uses Zoom, and the school district uses Zoom. So, you know, when can we have people give their own public comments via Zoom? I don't know if that's a 9B. Sorry.
Yeah, I mean, we can look at that. The, the public hearing notices provide for, that are set out, provide for the, the information for people to participate in Zoom, as well as on the agenda itself. We're, we're finding that we're getting more participation via the emails than we are through anything else on, on public statements. So it seems to be more effective, although it's the voice of, of someone else, as opposed to someone via Zoom. But if, if, if the council desires, we can, we can figure out a way to have Zoom just for regular public statements as well.
I think the more accessibility we offer to the public, the better. We, we always want more civic engagement, not less. So, and seeing as how we have first graders that know how to use Zoom now, like, everybody knows how to use Zoom. I, you know, I, I would prefer, you know, that we have Zoom for full public comment. And I know there's concern with security, but, you know, today, we, we did it, and it was fine. And so I, the county does it, lots of cities do it. And I keep getting asked this question, when are we going to be allowed to do public comments via Zoom? So that's my first request. The second request is-
And then I'll just say, if it's going to be a 9B, you know, you'd have to do a second and all that, because technically, it's just for stuff that's on the agenda.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I think we're okay with that one's going to, we could discuss it. We don't need to agendize it. But I, I think you heard loud and clear.
Okay. My, my second request is, we have never yet had a transition to districts. And yes, there are people still asking, what voting district am I in? I know there's stuff on the website, but we never, you know, launched it. Like, you know, Moore Park launched, you know, hey, the new districts, the voting districts, so that people knew. We never did that. We said we were going to do it, but we never did it. I'd like to see that on the agenda.
We've got a couple of press releases coming out to remind people of districts, where they vote, and, and everything like that. I, I-
And the reason why it's really important that we do it as soon as possible is because people are asking me, you know, if I go to, to that voting place, will they have my district voting? Like, they are not sure where they can go to vote so that they're going to have their, the correct ballot for them. So it's really important for the integrity of our democratic process in the upcoming election, which is in less than a month, that we have a transition for districts, so people know what district they're in and where they can go vote, to make sure they have the ballot that pertains to them according to the district that they live in. That's why it's urgent.
Could, could that be a short staff report done at our next meeting?
Well, what we can do, it's a special presentation.
That's, I mean, the map's up there and everything. I think that would be great.
What, you know, when, when you mentioned that, I was thinking, if, if we could even make a handout, and I don't know if it can go in the Water Bill or anything, something that's already going out.
And we'll, we'll miss any deadline on that.
But that's what I was thinking while Ruth was talking, is, the problem is, we wouldn't get it out in time for the election.
Well, we have a press release with social media, and just, and then in multiple languages, at least in Spanish as well.
Yeah, and that's exactly what we're doing, is we've got press releases lined up, social media lined up during this, we're October now, during this month in order to-
Ballots are dropping, like, today. Like, some people have already gotten their ballots today, and they still don't know.
Correct. So we, we, we'll be pushing that out, and we'll be more than happy to schedule a, a special presentation for the October 19th meeting.
But what I heard in Ruth's question, which is, I'm not, I meant, the presentation is great, is, is if that could include, we, we've gotten lists of where people can take their ballots, et cetera. But what I'm hearing in Ruth's question is that if they are trying to go and vote in person, do they need to vote according to their district or not? Or are they, can they go to any location in the city? And so I think that's what I was hearing in your question.
Correct. And we'll, and we'll cover that.
Okay.
Yep. That, that'll be covered in the press releases as well.
I'm happy to translate, okay? I, I offer my services to translate to Spanish.
I would think a good-sized exhibit at the voting places, too, showing their district.
Yeah, but how would they know where to go? Like, they don't know.
Well, I mean, if you get there, you can see-
People ask me, like, where can I go? And I said, I'm not sure either.
Well, I, I can, I can tell you real quickly, the, there aren't polls in every district. There are only four voting locations in town. One, one's here, one's at the Reagan Library, I forget where the other two. So you can go to any polling place in town in order to vote.
Regardless of what district you live in?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, and they'll pull up your address.
That's correct.
Can I say that in Spanish, for whoever's listening in Spanish? Is that okay, Mayor? If I translate? Can I translate that to Spanish?
Okay, para los que van a votar, el mes que entra en noviembre, el 3 de noviembre, no importa en cuál distrito vive uno, puede ir a cualquier de los cuatro locales donde va a ser votación en persona para votar. Si no importa si están necesito uno, dos, tres o cuatro, y pueden votar, y allí van a poder votar en persona, y van a tener los boletos que necesitan para votar. Okay? Gracias. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I think it was there. Unfortunately, we're going to continue 2020 on in the sad sense, I guess you'd say. Tonight, we're going to adjourn this meeting in memory of Murray Shapiro. Those of you that may remember, Murray is a World War II vet who landed at Normandy and fought at Bulge. And he's been a resident of Simi Valley for many, many years. And he passed away, I think, a week ago Saturday. And he was a, a true patriot, gave so much to this country, and lived a long, very good life. So from that standpoint, we're happy for Murray. John Williamson, many of you know John. I've met him. I, I don't know him well. He's an attorney. And John passed away. And of course, Mark and Jacob Iskender, Iskender, I think that's the right phrase saying it. I don't mean to mispronounce their names. Tragic, tragic event. Two young lives taken based on a DUI driver. And this happened in Westlake, if you're not aware. But they had close ties to Simi Valley. They went to church here, well-thought-of family. And just, to me, it's just heartbreaking to lose two young boys like that. And we'll definitely, you know, do what we do and send certificates and what have you from the council to the, to the parents or survivors. And with that sad note, meetings adjourned.